Welcome to the County Planning Commission meeting for the 4th of September, 2025. Welcome here. We're glad you're here to participate in this process. Before we begin, we'd like to welcome our newest member of the Planning Commission, Morris Poole. Had a new member of the Planning Commission for a long time, so welcome.
Thank you.
We will begin our meeting tonight with opening remarks by Commissioner Member Brady Christensen, after which he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'm going to give my opening remarks in the form of a prayer. Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for our many blessings and thanks for the opportunity that we have to be here tonight, participate in the planning and zoning meeting. We ask thee, my Father, that the things that we discuss, that we may take serious, the current laws, the ordinances that the county has set, and the proposals before us, that we might be guided and directed on the best decision for everybody involved. We thank thee for this land in which we live, for the freedoms which we enjoy, and we ask thee at the end of this meeting that we may all return in safety to where we came from. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen. Please stand and join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brady. Appreciate that. We have a pretty aggressive agenda tonight with 12 items, and so it should be a quick meeting, we hope. We will, wanted to start with, we need to look at our agenda and the minutes. No modifications to the agenda tonight. And did everyone have an opportunity to look at the minutes? If so, I would entertain a motion to approve both of those items.
I'll make that motion.
You have a motion? Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. Like we said, really aggressive agenda, lots of stuff to talk about tonight. As we go into this, we do have three public hearings after our consent agenda. And just a reminder to everybody to try to keep your remarks succinct and keep those to about three minutes as we go through that, so we can get the information out. And I encourage you to not repeat if there's somebody's made a certain point, you know, think about using another one, so we can best utilize our time. The first item on the agenda, item number one, is on the consent agenda. And for those who are not used to what we do here, a consent agenda item has met all of the requirements and probably does not need significant discussion in this meeting, and many times they are just approved. However, we do have those on the agenda in case somebody has something germane to that, they want to say about the Cub River Estates Phase Two subdivision. Anybody that wants to give us any points on that? Okay. Commissioner, what do we want to do with the consent agenda tonight?
I'll make a motion to approve the Cub River Estates Phase Two subdivision.
One second.
We have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. Our regular action items, item number two is a public hearing, and we are at 5:35, so we're right on schedule here for that. This is the SBA UT 24138B Paradise Rezone. Branding, people, branding. And let's get an overview from Connor.
Yeah, so it's a request to apply the public infrastructure overlay to 0.057 acres, about 30-acre parcel. That's currently the 810 zone. Staff is recommending approval because it's reasonably consistent with the purpose of the public infrastructure overlay. It's pretty much it. We did receive one public comment from Paradise City, who had some concerns. Their concerns are pretty much just they want to be involved in the actual development process. So realistically, nothing too crazy.
Okay. All right. Commissioner, any questions on this proposal? All right. This is a public hearing. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll move.
Motion? Have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. If you would like to comment on this proposal, the SBA UT 24138B Paradise Rezone, now is the time that you could do that. Please approach the microphone up here and state your name for the record. Last chance.
Mr. Chairman, seeing that there's no interest, I'd move that we close the public hearing.
Okay. You have a motion? Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Item number two is also a public heari-- oh, no, we probably ought to skip that one for right now, because we were scheduled at 5:50.
Better act on this one.
Act on this one?
Oh, excuse me, yes. Let's take some action there.
You don't have to, if you don't want to.
Yeah. I'm trying to move this meeting along.
You weren't moving quick.
Okay. Commissioner, what do we want to do on this one?
So can we just clarify one thing? Connor, Mr. Chairman? So, right now is that, it says overlay a portion, less than a half an acre, of the 30.64-acre parcel.
Twenty-five hundred square feet.
So literally, can we do this with a portion of the parcel, or does the whole parcel have to be?
It's typically just a portion. The Ruby Pipeline, that's the example on there, the nearest one, same thing, it's just a portion of the parcel.
I think we made a change to that years ago, because we were doing the entire parcel, and it was a 500 parcel with this postage stamp of an antenna or a telecommunications facility, and it made more sense to limit that.
Yeah, I think on this, it'll come to a conditional use permit, right, next? That's where it'll be scrutinized, I think, further, as far as what they're proposing, right?
Correct.
Correct. And Paradise City did provide comment on it, and as Connor said, they want to be involved with the process. It is within their future annexation zone. Okay. Any other discussion on this?
Seeing that we don't have any opposition and that the county research points us the direction that it should work with what they're asking for, I'd move that we approve the SBA UT-- excuse me, I would move that we recommend to the council to approve the SBA UT 24138-B Rezone. And per the county, they give us--
Conclusion.
Couple of conclusions there. Basically just one.
One conclusion.
Say it's hereby recommended of approval to the county council that it's reasonably consistent with the purpose of the public infrastructure overlay.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. And we are still early for the other public hearing, so-- Given that, we'll move on to item number five, the Honey Solar Stone Project Ordinance Amendment. Connor, you all right to--
Yeah, there's no changes, aside from last time, we just clarified the legal language. Legal's cool with it now, so nothing else has changed.
Any discussion on the language that was put in there? Okay. All right. And so we are still, we've still continued that. We did it for up to 90 days, and so another 60 days on that one.
We're hoping for a recommendation to be there, or the county council, so.
Tonight.
Tonight.
Oh, you're looking for that tonight, okay. All right. Any discussion on this with the current-- Modifications?
I think we can kick it around as much as we want, as long as we want, but we're really not going to probably accomplish a whole lot until somebody actually comes before us and proposes a-- What's your guys' thoughts?
Yeah, I think we get this approved, and then they come for a conditional use permit somewhere, and we see how it works, I think.
We'll have to come for a rezone first.
Rezone and then a conditional use, yeah.
And I think that's the--
Yep.
That's where the rubber meets the road. The one substantive real move that we made in this one was the rezone. Part of this, so there is that, that they have to get through before one of these can go through.
I would anticipate that the majority of the people surrounding any of these operations are not going to be too pleased about it, but therefore, that's why we have a rezone request, giving them the opportunity to come in per time.
Unless it's one of the small-scale things, right?
Yeah. Was that less than five acres?
I can't remember off the top of my head.
Less than 20. And I did have a question, Connor, on the, let's see.
Yeah. Up to 20.
Five up to 20. What is that?
More than five.
But not exceeding 20. Or smaller is less than five.
I had a question on the restoration agreement, the last section, in that-- On item D there, it says, "A financial guarantee for the rehabilitation and restoration of the land to be placed in incremental deposits at certain phases of the project." My concern on that was, we really haven't specified what that would be. I--
Yeah, I mean presumably it would be for, you know, each phase of the project--
Yeah.
Requires the next--
A certain--
Because if you're doing it in 10-acre increments or something like that, there's-- Why would you bond for 40 acres if that's not going to be implemented in some way or time or something like that?
Yeah. But I didn't think that was terribly clear as to what that would be, but by the time the entire project is done, the complete bonding needs to be in--
Right place.
For sure. For that. I don't know what your feel is. To me, it seemed kind of vague.
Yeah, and we talked about it a little bit, I think, in the last meeting about that, and not knowing how the project would come for the proposal, they could come in so many different ways. I thought that's why we kind of went this way, until we saw the actual project and knew how the phasing might happen. It was hard to, because they could come in so many different potentials, but you could add that line that--
Yeah.
By the final phase, everything, the total amount would be paid.
Or just say, yeah, that or, and/or, you could say, "Placed in incremental deposits commensurate with the phasing of the project."
The only challenge with that, though, is you let them build it. You don't have the money before it's built. You may not get it.
I think what we're saying here is that they would put the money down for that phase of work.
Before it was built, or before it was started. I would be in agreement with that.
We had a discussion with Cole Stoker. Do you want to come up? You can kind of explain why that's there. There is kind of the idea of flexibility, like Nate said. It is kind of just--
Why, he's coming just real quick.
I think even if we had that line, it would still be flexible.
Yeah. The only other concern, too, with that bonding, or concerning the rehabilitation of the ground, it's kind of a two-edged sword, because if we allow vegetation, then we got a potential high fire hazard. But if we beat the heck out of it with sterilants and whatever else, how do you resuscitate it back into farmland again?
Agreed. Yeah, Cole Stoker with the Nellie Power. So, on the first thing, when it comes to putting--
The bond down. Generally, you're going to need a third party to do an estimate on what the restoration cost would be, and that's pretty hard to do until the facility's in the ground. We generally put a percentage of the bond down later in, you know, the life cycle of the project. You know, it's been built for maybe 10 years. Generally, we put down a percentage and then adjust that up to 100% every five years. I read a study today that says that's pretty successful throughout the country and in Canada. A lot of people are doing that. Some people require 100% bond at COD, so when the project is built and functioning, that's when the bond's put down. So there's a few different ways you can do it. You can do incrementally or right at year one, right when it's built. But it's hard to know what the amount of the bond is until you've actually done the work and have the facility built, and then have a third party come and do an assessment of what that would be.
Is there any statistics out there on the failure rate? How many of them start and don't make it?
I don't know. It's incredibly unlikely. So in order to even start, we have to get procurement back like three years. We get our financing three, four years. We get our equipment ordered. You're talking in the hundreds of millions, potentially. So if you get to the point where you're actually breaking ground, you've spent a lot of money with financiers that have to have their own guarantees. So it's really unlikely that the project would be built and then, like, not be used and just left there. So I don't know of any examples where that has happened. I have a study that I can probably send to you guys to show, like, the end of life, how unlikely it is that the restoration won't happen. And I'm happy to send that along. That's been done by like a third-party independent researcher.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thanks.
Any thoughts after hearing that?
I'd be fine. Add in the line that just kind of gives that a little more definition. Either way, I'm--
Want to restate that?
What would you like me to restate?
It was more his, yeah, for how the commensurate with the phasing.
Yeah. "A financial guarantee for the rehabilitation and restoration of the land to be placed in incremental deposits commensurate with the phasing-- of the project." Something like that.
Like that. Yeah.
Just gives the applicant a little more definition there.
You know, it's not that we don't trust people putting their projects in, but you look at the current climate, and, you know, federal funding can end on something like this.
Well, solar, for instance, has really saw some ups and downs, just like on houses.
I think a lot of the funding for this will end at the end of the year. Saw a story on that the other day. And so you can see how something like that could really impact the ability of a project to actually complete and then restore it there if it happens to fail. Okay.
I don't know if you guys each want to give your opinion on it. I'm honestly not a big fan of seeing one of these anywhere in our valley. But at the same time, property rights, we beat it around, kicked it around. If the consensus, people want it, and then we still have a case-by-case to-- It's not just a rubber stamp tonight saying that this is going to go anywhere. You got to come in and apply and go through the steps. So even though I'm not in favor, I'd tend to support moving forward.
You've seen the ones over there in Plymouth, right off the highway.
Ridg County.
The question I have is maintenance of that property during the time that the facility is there. Is that spelled out in this anywhere?
That would be the conditional use, I would assume.
That's what it would come up with.
That's where that would be. This is really developing an ordinance around this. At this juncture, we don't have an ordinance around these types of facilities. Any other comments, thoughts?
I think you're right, Brady, just, you know, it's going to come down to the site, right? Like, it's, for me, it's an appropriate use in the right context.
Right.
So we'll see what comes before us, take our determination accordingly.
Okay. I will entertain a motion if somebody wants to make one.
I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of this ordinance, 17-07-030 and 17-09-030, Chapter 17-12.
Can I ask a question real quick for clarification for the record? Connor, has there been a public hearing on this?
Last time.
You did do it last time, okay, just wanted to know that, thank you. Recommend approval to the county council.
Okay. We have a motion? We have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? Did we want to ensure that we had that amendment, that we added that language in there? All right. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nate? Okay. We are at 5:50. We'll go back to item number three, public hearing for the Sparks Ventures Rezone. Connor, do we have an overview for this one?
Yeah, so it's a request to rezone 10 acres from the agricultural zone to the industrial zone. The parcel matches the configuration of August 8, 2006, and is legal. If approved, it would allow for uses permitted within the industrial zone. Adjacent uses properties to the north are a mix of agricultural and residential, while properties to the east, south, and west are agricultural. The nearest property in the county that's in the industrial zone is located a fifth of a mile to the east of the subject property. The future land use, it's currently in the Hyde Park City future annexation area. In terms of the future plan, it's in the agriculture and ranching area, which, as I'm sure you can see, it's all about agriculture and ranching. The purpose of it is agriculture and ranching. Agricultural and rangeland uses on private lands under conservation easements are expected to continue in the valley. Separation from dense residential developments is advantageous. The agricultural landscape provides separation between adjacent municipalities and protects suitable soils. Preferred land uses includes agriculture, ranching, rural residential uses at densities of less than one unit per 10 acres. Conservation easements, public lands, and agritourism. Secondary land uses include industrial and commercial uses directly supportive of agriculture, so processing, packaging, and distribution. Clustered subdivision developments, outdoor recreation, and farmworker housing. Discouraged uses includes residential developments at densities of greater than one unit per 10 acres, if not clustered. Commercial office, commercial retail, flex office slash industrial, and heavy industrial. It's also in the urban expansion overlay. Currently, it has frontage along 4200 North and 800 West. 4200 North is classified as a major collector and is a county road, provides access to agricultural properties, and generally serves to provide through access from Benson to US 91. Has an existing width of 20 feet, a 66-foot right-of-way, no paved shoulder, a 1-5-foot gravel shoulder, and a 0-18-foot clear zone. It's paved. It's currently substandard as to paved shoulder, gravel shoulder, and clear zone. 800 West provides access to agricultural fields, is an unimproved gravel road that's 12 feet wide, and is planned to continue south to 3700 North in the future. The fire district had no comments. The applicant wanted to work with waste management for solid waste disposal. Noticing was completed on August 22. The agenda for the meeting was posted at the county website on August 22. And Hyde Park made a comment, and they did have some concerns about it, mainly about the provision of services, and they also mentioned concerns about having a septic system in the area. But staff has no recommendation. We'll help you draft a letter to county council.
Okay. Thank you, Connor. Appreciate that. Any questions? Do we want to hear from the proponent, the applicant, prior to opening the public hearing? Is the applicant here? Please come up, introduce yourself, tell your name.
My name's Blake Sparks. I own this property. And I've had this property for 40 years now, and this property happens to have a higher water table to it. And so as far as agriculture goes, I haven't had-- When I bought this 40 years ago, it was just grassland. And, you know, as time has gone along, I'm just, pretty much just fighting fox tail, burbushes, that kind of thing. You know, I try to keep it sprayed, keep it down, but as far as agriculture goes, it's kind of too wet for that. So we've just kind of been in that spot. Now, as things have progressed, and my neighbor down the road there, he's got himself an industrial zone. We've moved a piece right there. To me, you know, it looks like, you know, it would be a good fit. As I have talked with Connor, as we look into the futures as to what, you know, the county wants to see happen down there, it falls into the commercial industrials portion. And so where it's really not a valuable piece for agriculture, I kind of want to move it that way into industrial. I realize that there's going to have to take and be some work done on the roadways there. But really, before I can do anything with it as far as seeing what I might be able to put on there, you know, to, you know, give us some revenue for the county and build on it, it's got to be rezoned, you know, or, you know, my architects, engineers really ain't looking into, you know, spending a lot of time and money on something that's not zoned to fit what it's needed to be. So with that, I was thinking, should be able to take and move this into industrial. Maybe with that piece right next, or close by me there that's industrial, we can get some roadwork done on there and improve some infrastructure, and it's a win-win for everybody, I believe.
Thank you. Any questions? We'll get to public comment in just a minute. Okay? Thank you.
Motion to open a public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay.
We now open the public hearing, so if you would like to make a public comment, please come up to the podium here and state your name for the record. As we said, please try to keep our comments to about three minutes.
I would just like to know which road it is that is going to be worked on for that, and where exactly is the property? I know it's 800 West, 4200 North, but is that northeast of that intersection?
That intersection is southwest.
Okay.
Can you please state your name?
My name is Garrett Reichert.
You realize that you turn out the mortuary and go west from there, you pass the end of the airport runway and continue on.
It's called Bullock's Lane locally.
Okay. And then what would that, so are we proposing that the road needs to be widened? Is it 4200 North that needs to be widened?
That's what I'm getting, is that there's going to need to be some kind of widening there. There's going to need to be some shoulder work there. And as far as 8th West goes, you know, as I've talked with the street people, that is going to have to take and be developed down my length of the section of road. I guess along with that, you know, we'll also talk with fire. And depending on what we take and we build on there, if we keep this in cement and steel, we will have to have, you know, a smaller water supply, you know, for fire extinguishing purposes. There actually is a well on that piece of property, so there is a constant supply of water there, free-flowing well. But back to what your comment is, the road, we're dealing with the north side and the east side from what the road department takes and tells me.
So we're looking at a rezone to change the potential use for this property tonight is the subject that we're discussing, so.
Okay.
Anyone else like to comment on this?
My name's Stan Checketts. I live just north of this property on 800 West. And a couple of questions that I have is, where we're going agriculture, and he's taking an undeveloped road and developing a road. 8th West is already a highway, and it's a very neglected road by the county. Is the county, if this is approved, considering fixing 8th West all the way up to Smithfield City limits? And 4200, as addressed in your comment, does not have adequate width. It has a 60, I thought you said, 60-60-foot, 66-foot easement? Is that going to be expanded along 4200 if something like this is approved? Because I do notice down by the mortuary that you're referencing, that's a half-mile away, they did have to expand the road just on their portion, but only on their portion. So my concern would be-- So my concern would be, Eighth West is turned into a highway already, or Eighth East, yeah, Eighth West. Are we going to take that into consideration?
Thank you.
So as I've talked with the county about that road, forty-two hundred, where he's talking about in front of the mortuary there, that actually falls in Hyde Park City. So as you come off the main highway, ninety-one, there, Hyde Park City owns a couple of blocks past the mortuary and over to probably Second West is where it turns into county ground. And so, just, just information on that roadway in front of the mortuary, it's actually Hyde Park, not county. So.
Thank you.
Different.
Anybody else want to comment on this?
I'm Scott Richens. So I've lived on Eighth West, north, north of this parcel, since Eighth West was a dirt trail. So we, we've gone from having a beautiful rural area to now they've got a elementary school north of us, a temple. Eighth West is probably one of the worst roads in the county. You can't pass two vehicles on it without knocking something out of alignment. My kids grew up riding horses down that dirt road. You could not ride a horse down that road now. Not sure, I mean, what does this mean? More storage sheds? Is that really what we need? You know, the, the traffic's bad enough. We have a lot of commercial, commercially-zoned property still in Cache Valley that's unutilized. Until that's used up, I mean, for instance, in Smithfield on, on seven south there. Our D, our tax money, our RDA money goes for that development, and what is there, two facilities in there? There's a bunch of open property. I am adamantly against rezoning, taking any agriculture land out to create more traffic. You guys are going to push us all to Idaho, along with our businesses.
Any other comments from public?
See no further comment. Motion to close the public hearing.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Question, what do we want to do with this one?
This is a little tougher one for me, anyway. It's because it's out there, isolated all by itself, feels like a spot zone kind of situation. So, so I struggle with that aspect of it.
Well, we had one comment against, and the others, I'm not clear whether they were for or against on the public comments.
Clarify that if you will.
Say yea or nay.
I get it.
Look at it, more like the one we did a few months ago, west of the temple, right? Also a spot rezone for commercial or industrial, similar, similar situation. And there wasn't anything, you know, the, the prior one before that was the one out there by Nibley. It had some access issues, so it was easier to deny. But for me, after we approved that spot rezone, essentially, which was further than this one is from existing industrial, right? We're only a few hundred feet. You know, for me, I, we've, we've almost set the precedence that we approve them now. Unless there's some glaring thing from the city or the county or something that doesn't work there.
Mr. Chairman, I think I'd look at the Hyde Park's comments. I think that has to put some weight in there when Hyde Park says they're uncomfortable with being able to service the property. That makes a difference.
Well, yeah, they wouldn't be required to, or it's not in their city, I guess, but.
But even on the future, if it's in their annexation plan.
What, one thing that the county spent a whole lot of money on though, and they'll do it again and again and again, is the envisioned Cache Valley. And I think back on that, one big point of it was trying to keep the open. And it's not that this is, is bad, but the location, is that where we want it? And if one goes there, look what's gone through North Logan on the west side, Hyde Park. I mean, that's an area, another area that's just designed for that. I respect the property rights, but I'm... I have to think that if we want open space, maintain it, you know, in the areas and utilize these other areas, just a, just a thought. The industrial makes it even harder because there's a wide array. Commercial is, is one thing, but industrial, it's, it's pretty open.
Other comments?
For my take on this one, this one's problematic for me, just because there are a number of things really against it, but what we've heard from, from you commissioners as well, you know, dropping a spot zone out there invites that. Some of the things that applicants brought up, you know, high water table. We're putting an industrial zone in a high water table. That's problematic. As somebody who travels that road, putting, putting more, both of those roads, putting more traffic on that is, is a challenge until that road is, is improved. So I do have a number of, a number of concerns, and in my mind, it's, it's probably not time yet.
It was within two months, the last two months, that a milk truck rolled coming off the highway, or rolled one of their tankers. I think it was a milk truck, right there east of the mortuary. That access, there's no egress, there's no nothing, there's no nothing to get big vehicles, even though they still try. It's, it's almost setting it up for failure or pushing them to these other roads through the residential areas that would also kind of be a concern.
In addition, we don't really have a clear plan of, of where we're going, and we, and that opens us up to quite a variety of different, different options, so. Your my comments. What would, what would you like to do?
Well, Mr. Chairman, and I'm liable to try and stay on agenda. I'll try. I'd make a motion that we recommend denial, choose option one, the Sparks Ventures rezone with the three...
Conclusions.
Conclusions.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right. The next item on our agenda, public hearing for the Greenfield Industrial Warehouse rezone. Connor?
All righty. So this is a request to rezone eight point seven nine total acres from the commercial and agricultural zone to the industrial zone. Essentially, you're looking at two parcels there. The parcel that's on the left is dash zero zero one one, is in the A-ten zone. Then dash zero zero one six, which is on the right, is split zone between the commercial and the agricultural zone.
Could you point those out, just?
Yeah, point those out, absolutely.
Oh, sorry. So it looks like there's two. Generally, that's where the split is. The reason why GIS has this one right here is because planners are kind of dumb and they miss it from time to time, so they have a very distinct way of marking that it's two zones. So that's kind of why that's there. So these are actually one parcel. So the two parcels are this one right here, and then this one right here.
The, the A-ten though, well, that, that south parcel is a split. If you look at the definition of it, it's a split commercial slash A-ten, even though it's tied to the same parcel. But the interesting thing is that one acre, I think it's just a little over an acre, that sits on the corner where the trailers are parked, is... That's, that's a total separate parcel again, and that one is solely A-ten.
Yeah, if we look here, that's the zoning right there. The red is commercial, and the tan is A-ten.
Can you go out just a little bit? So, so put that red on it again. But why does the parcel to the side of it, when we pull it up, show zone primary A-ten, but secondary commercial?
Try to ask GIS about it. I can ask them tomorrow.
And keep the same parcel number on top of that anyhow.
I got to continue?
Yeah.
All righty. So they do match the configuration they had on August eighth, two thousand and six, so they're legal lots, or parcels. If approved, it would allow for uses permitted inside of the industrial zone. Adjacent uses property to the north are primarily agricultural. Properties to the east and south are a mix of residential and agricultural. And properties to the west are industrial. The nearest parcel, or parcel in the county that's in the industrial zone is located one hundred feet to the west of the subject property. In this case, it's the flower mill. So future land use, it's located inside of the agriculture and ranching area. Purpose and character of this area is agriculture and rangeland uses on private lands under conservation easements are expected to continue in the valley. Separation from dense residential developments is advantageous. The agricultural landscape provides separation between adjacent municipalities and protects suitable soils. Preferred land uses include agriculture, ranching, rural residential, uses at densities of less than one unit per ten acres, conservation easements and conserve public lands and agritourism. Secondary land uses includes industrial and commercial uses directly supportive of agriculture, so processing, packaging, and distribution, clustered subdivision developments, outdoor recreation, and farm worker housing. Discouraged uses includes residential developments at densities of greater than one unit per ten acres, if not a clustered subdivision development, commercial office, commercial retail, flex office, and industrial, and then heavy industrial. It's also located inside of the urban expansion overlay. In terms of roads, it currently has frontage along Highway ninety-one and one one six zero zero north. Highway ninety-one is classified as a principal arterial. It provides access to residential, industrial, and agricultural properties. It's classified as an access category four, which has an access spacing of five hundred feet and a minimum street spacing of six hundred and sixty feet. While one one six zero zero north is classified as a minor collector and is a county road, provides access to residential, commercial, and agricultural properties, has an existing width of twenty-two feet, has a sixty-six foot right-of-way, a plus-minus one-foot paved shoulder, a two-foot gravel shoulder, a five-to-eighteen-foot clear zone, is paved. It's currently considered substandard as to paved shoulder and clear zone. The fire district had no comments. The applicant wanted to work with waste management for solid waste disposal. Noticing was completed on the twenty-second, and then the agenda for the meeting was posted at the county website on the twenty-second as well. One comment has been received from Richmond City, and Richmond City has no issues with it. We don't have a recommendation, but we'll help you draft a letter to county council.
All right. Thank you, Connor. Appreciate that. Any questions?
I, I have one question for staff. So I just need to disclose, and I don't know, I don't know yet if I'll vote or not, but I own the parcel that's in red. And so I directly border on two sides. The south parcel that's currently agricultural, A-ten primary, but commercial secondary. So my question to staff is, and Connor, you and I discussed this earlier in the week. It was, and granted, things could change, but just a little history on this. This has been an awesome operation. It's been well taken care of. It's a warehouse that was built, what, eighty-two?
Something like that. It's been around.
So it's been grandfathered in long ago to operate as a warehouse on a commercial parcel. I don't know what effect the A-ten comes in for parking, if that's in compliance or non-compliance. The fact that it's been used the entire time for what we see there, I don't, I don't, I, I would anticipate that it's grandfathered. But here, my question is, if, if they're going to continue to use that as a warehouse, and all they want to do is put a bathroom in it and bring it up to standards today, where does that grandfather go? Why can't that just stay with it and not have to go to the industrial?
So theoretically, if they don't touch it, it doesn't need to go anywhere.
Okay, but clarify that. You said theoretically, if they don't touch it.
Yeah, so if they don't do anything outside of the approved use, or add a bathroom, or expand, or anything like that?
So if they add a bathroom within the, the compounds of the existing foundation, that throws it out. Even though it's grandfathered as a warehouse.
Anything they do, yeah. Unless it's an existing use. If they have a bathroom in there already and they remodel it, I wouldn't have an issue with it. That kind of comes down to the director. But if they're expanding at all, I mean at all, then usually, yeah, they do need to come back in for anything.
Just one, one, one last quick. It's going to be a new warehouse. I'm sure it's going to be a new warehouse. It's not to bring the current one in compliance. It's going to be a new development.
It could be, but one last question. Because them two parcels, even though they're the same number, because they currently have a divider in them, and they're currently described separately, could that south parcel be busted off, remain the way it is, and allow the rest of it to go industrial?
No, it's essentially everything or nothing. It's basically now, it's the entire parcel or nothing, kind of like the earlier one, where you could kind of do it individually, like spot zone it a little bit. In this case, it's the entire parcel or nothing. That kind of just reflects the fact that things happened back in the day, and now that's just how they show it. Because realistically, it is just one parcel. That visualization right there is just how GIS shows it. So I don't miss it or anything like that, because I have missed them in the past before. So they make it very, very clear for people. Causes a lot of confusion, but yeah.
In order to do what Brady's suggesting, they would have to subdivide it.
And they can't do that. They're not sufficient acreage.
Can they do a lot line adjustment and create a new parcel?
I know we had someone call earlier this week, and we talked about that with them, in terms of adjusting it so they don't need to worry about that south parcel and consider. The assumption there is they can, but this would have to stop and they'd have to come back and see what's again. Like the rezone would be put on hold.
Well, again, I may just, I may recuse myself, but it's just a challenge, that south parcel, if the other was to go industrial, because you look at the parcel west of it, it's, it's currently A-ten, hundred percent. A-ten borders it on three and, three and, over three and a half sides, A-ten borders it. This south parcel. And so if you could take the corner and do what you want to do with it, but it really is burdensome to neighboring properties without knowing what's going to happen if you take this south parcel and put it industrial when you're surrounded on over three and a half sides by A-ten. Kind of like we were talking about with the prior one, but I'll listen.
So I was just going to comment, one, property line adjustment, because it's technically just two parcels. That third one that's A-ten, that's part of the commercial, is still a part of the commercial, it just has a split zoning, and typically, the more restrictive zone applies. But it's not like we could rearrange the parcels to create three separate ones, even though it's being illustrated that way, because it technically is just two.
Technically, that line should be erased.
Yes, yeah. That would, yeah, decrease the confusion on it. But yeah, again, GIS does that just to help identify that something else is going on, so to take a deeper look at it. And in this case, it's because of the split zone.
I guess the challenge arises one more time, that it's an existing property being used for the use that it is, and it's been fine.
Right, and it can continue being legal non-conforming based on whatever approvals, but that legal non-conforming status, or grandfathered status, as you mentioned, does come with restrictions as to expanding or changing it from the approved use.
Other questions for staff?
Other questions for staff?
If that does become a commercial property, has the state been consulted with? As far as what's going to happen at that intersection, because that becomes a very busy intersection no matter what. And I think we need to know what the future plans are there, because I think there's been two or three people.
Killed there in the last five years.
And so it becomes, cause there's other industries on down the road to the west. So it becomes a very critical area, and most of it is because of big trucks.
Well, the, the speed limit's sixty-five right there.
That's correct.
And you've got a five-lane highway that you're trying to cross with tractors, semis, and kids on four-wheelers. It, it's nuts.
Well, the, the real problem to me is that the industry you've got there, Pittbridge Farm, wants to grow and is continuing to wanna grow. They're very profitable for the whole community there and the valley. We've got to somehow help them want to develop, but make it safe for everybody that's around them.
Wouldn't that be addressed as part of the CAP?
It'd be the conditional use.
Yeah.
This, where this is the zoning change. Other questions?
So if we change the zone, that has to be addressed, is what you're saying.
Prior to, prior to making any changes from, from the current.
When they come to you with something.
The current use, they'll come back for a conditional use permit, and then we would address those particular impacts.
On, on the, just one last thing, though, on the flip side, that flower mill does stand to benefit agriculture, and for that, we're very appreciative. But, I mean, not throwing them under the bus, but, and they've gone to great lengths with signage and whatever, but it's just lucky we haven't had more accidents with grain trucks lined up. Clear back to the north of that intersection, and that's part of what this property's supposed to help alleviate, but you still gotta get them across that busy road.
There's no question.
Okay.
Having lived in the north, I know. Having lived north of there, I know.
I have a motion to.
Move to open public hearing.
Well, second, Dan.
Have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wants to comment on this, on this proposal, please come forward. Okay. Motion.
Make a motion to close the buck here.
I'll second.
Motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Well, for me, across the road, we have probably, what, three hundred acres of industrial? It sounds like this may be tied into that as part of their operations. So I, I wouldn't have an issue.
Yeah.
With the rezone. I get, I agree, there's some issues they're gonna have to work out with you on, if that's gonna be their.
It's gonna be there no matter what.
Their trade or transfer.
It's a big deal.
And I, I do like Brady's idea. I wish we could split that little five-acre south piece off, but you can't, but. Yeah, I think with, with all the industrial that's there.
Probably about two and a half acres to three, maybe most.
It makes sense to me.
Yeah, it's not a major intersection.
If you made a motion, I'll second it.
Well, I was gonna see if there was more discussion first, but I was getting close.
More discussion? Did you make a motion?
Nope, but I will now. I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the Greenfield Milling Industries Warehouse Rezone Request to the County Council.
I'll second.
For approval.
Okay, with the conclusion, I guess is what we.
I'm gonna read cues.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Then one abstention.
Then one abstention. Thank you. Okay, we have our public hearings taken care of. We'll now move on to the Saddle Ridge, number, item number six, Saddle Ridge subdivision.
Yeah, this is a pretty lengthy staff report, and the commission is familiar with it. So I won't go into great detail, but just note, the first couple of items. I have drafted this to allow for it to be approved with the conditions, even though it's not currently in conformance with the code. But on the other hand, the county engineer would recommend another continuance in order to review a traffic impact study and to better assess the impacts on the existing road and what might need to be improved. So just to quickly summarize the history. We first saw this in the April Planning Commission meeting, where it was a twenty-one lot subdivision, gaining access from the north through, can you bring this up? Oh, sorry, your screen's different than this one. Okay, no problem. Accesses from the north, existing road through the Nautica subdivision, and to the main road. That road is considered substandard. Even the school district, too, the applicant provided a letter for them, stated they don't take the buses down that road, cause it's too dangerous. And so the bus stop is at the main county road intersection. So, again, that was one of the deficiencies in the April Planning Commission meeting and staff report that was identified. The requirement from fire district, per the International Fire Code, and then Public Works Road Manual, also required a secondary ingress egress, which was not being proposed. So there were a number of issues that brought staff to the recommendation to deny the application at that point. It was continued to allow the applicant to address deficiencies and to appeal the determination of the International Fire Code. So that was done in July. There was a hearing held, and the fire appeal board upheld the fire marshal's decision that they needed to still provide that secondary ingress egress, and the other exceptions did not apply. That's discussed more in detail here, along with the letter from the fire appeal board and letters from the applicant's attorney questioning their authority and ability to uphold that decision. So, in the meantime, they did submit some revised application materials for this meeting. The last continuance was in July for up to ninety days again, but they did submit the material prior to the deadline, wanting to be on this agenda. With the revised materials, they did add a twenty-second lot. They did a resurvey, and so they're up to just over two-hundred-and-twenty acres. Again, the A-ten zone does not reduce net developable acreage anymore for sensitive areas or road dedications. So they were able to do that one per ten and get the twenty-two. They also submitted last week a copy of a, one of the issues before was water rights. They only had thirteen at that time for the twenty-one, now twenty-two lot subdivision. They did provide a, an agreement to purchase additional water rights last week. That detail is. They were going to produce, or approve, sorry. Yeah, so they provided a water rights purchase agreement to purchase a portion of a seller's interest in existing water right. That portion would be ten acre feet, and that looks like it would be sufficient to do a change application, if approved, to fulfill the requirement for the additional domestic water rights for the other nine lots. Again, one of the deficiencies previously was that they needed to amend the Nautica subdivision to relocate the public road. So they have submitted an amendment, but that alignment can't, realignment cannot be done through a subdivision amendment. Vacation of roads and dedication of county roads does require county council approval, so they still need to go through that process. And they have been referred to the Public Works Department County Engineer to get that started. But, um, so this subdivision, in addition to needing the secondary ingress egress, is also dependent on a Nautica First subdivision amendment being recorded, which has not been done yet, and then the second one, doing the vacation of the county road and then the re-establishment. Those would all have to be done before this could ever be recorded, so there are a few steps, a few dominos in place that have to be taken care of before this proposed subdivision could be finalized. Again, I think those are the main issues. The applicant did meet with Development Services, where we talked through the water right information and some other stuff. But as far as I'm aware, they have not been in contact with the fire district or Public Works to discuss the requirements for the secondary ingress egress or road improvements to the existing road. And so that has not been addressed in their revised application. But the conditions as listed would still require them to meet those requirements. But again, because Public Works hasn't had an opportunity to review the traffic city in depth, or meet with their engineer to go over it. The requirements for improvements to the existing road are unknown. But with that, again, this has been drafted, that if you wanted to move forward with approval of conditions, that is a possibility. Or if you wanted to go with the recommendation of the county engineer to continue it, to work through and get a much clearer sense of what improvements need to be made to the existing road, and the impacts that that, this proposed development has on that. That would allow them time to do that and get better conditions made for road improvement requirements. With that, like I said, it's a long staff report, seventeen pages, so I won't read everything, but. And again, you are mostly familiar with it, with the exception of our new commissioner. But if you have questions for me, I'm happy to answer any of those. And the applicants are here as well, so.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. For staff, regarding the water rights. I just, I got to think about it, kinda find it interesting that if the subdivision hasn't even been approved yet. Why do we require water rights in the approval process, pending that if this is denied, a lot of the water rights are tied to, you gotta prove it and use it within five years, or you lose it? So, why, why is that, that we require that?
Typically, the, the reasoning behind that is that if you do change applications, that can take a while, and you just have the year of the approval period. And so in the past, that hasn't been enough time for people to get those in, but we have been changing our position over time, I would say. Originally, when I first started, they all had to be approved and in the owner's name. Then we got to the point where they either had to be proved, or at least in the change application process. And then through this application, the applicant stated your exact question, and worked with our county attorney's office, and we are allowing them to move forward with just the notion that they do have the correct, the total number of water rights secured, or secured upon approval. But not requiring in them to be fully approved yet.
Well, just extending that question. So, let's say, though, that if, whether it be this development or another one that comes up somewhere else. If, if the subdivision is approved, we're not gonna allow a building to go on it until they've got the water right, correct?
We won't allow the subdivision to be recorded until they have the water rights.
All the water rights for all of it?
Yes.
Okay, but at least then they got the approval.
Yeah, it shouldn't be on the property owner who's buying the lot to secure the water rights. It should be on the developer who is doing the subdivision to get those in place.
And just to clarify, the water rights, this is individual water rights for each lot, and they would be drilling wells. This would, this was not, they're not proposing a system.
Not at this point, no. And because this application was submitted in February originally, and then has been continued over time. They are vested under those requirements and not the, subject to the moratorium that's currently in place, so.
Thank you, that was my question. I wanna hear from the applicant. The applicant would like to.
Hi, everybody. I am Christopher, uh, my name is Christopher Huffman, and we've been here before. I'm one of the owners of the Saddle Ridge project and subdivision. And I know that this project has generated a lot of discussion in the past, and we're hoping that we can be able to be, to make today productive. Our intent's to help make sure that everybody fully, fully understands the project, and candidly, this is not a new thing. We're trying to just slide by really quickly in a month or two. We've been working for years with the county, with the staff. And the majority of the concerns that I just wanted to quickly just go over with you have been brought up at length. Have been debated at length with, I mean, between staff, between our engineers, the county attorney's office. We, we really do feel like we are in a position where there has been a significant amount of diligence done. With the road improvements being done, the county codes, what's applicable, changes that we can talk about tonight. We, we do not feel like we are in a position where we are not prepared to move forward with an approval with conditions. So I just wanted to make that clear. So ultimately, I wanted to start by just being able to address some of the technical and the easier conditions to be able to clarify those. The majority of those, there's, I believe, about twenty, there's twenty conditions. I promise they're really fast. And then the slightly, there's three or four of those that are slightly larger. Got Chris Hoagal, our attorney with us, that I just feel like he can be able to clarify these a lot better than I can, on where we stand. And, yeah, so if there's any questions throughout any of this, any of these conditions, I'm happy to be able to clarify that. So first, I just wanted to mention the engineer's request for a continuance. Respectfully, I do not, as we mentioned, feel like this would need a continuance, especially for the reasons stated. There were three requests for that continuance. Number one was the preliminary plat needs to show, be able to show future connectivity on the plat, and it references the road manual. We have done that and are currently abiding by everything within the road manual, and we even have an exhibit that we presented to the county that shows all the future roads that go beyond this, through about four to five hundred acres of this mountain. For all the future proposed roads, we have signed affidavits from all of those property owners, that they're willing and able to work with the county at the time that they choose to develop, which is their right. And we, within our development, are facilitating future access. Number two was that we didn't have a secondary access, which is part of what Chris is going to be able to address. And the third one had to do with the traffic impact study. We submitted that to the county on May ninth. There may have been some confusion about getting to the engineering department, but we submitted that months ago. And traditionally, the traffic impact study is not required until final plat. And ultimately, we don't feel, well, I've got a comment or two on the traffic study here in one of the, in one of the conditions, but we have had that report done. So, just going through, just a couple of the conditions. So, condition number three was prior to, prior to the approval, that, that traffic impact study was done to evaluate the safety and conditions of the road. The school district has given us a letter that simply states that they, just until the road is improved further, that they are picking up students at the bottom of sixty-four-hundred South. And that would just pretty much maintain the same with us until a point that that road will be improved, which we're gonna talk about here. Over the last fifteen years, there have, there have only been two reported accidents. One was a drunk driver that hit a pole. The other one was a car was struck by, or a car struck a deer. Neither of which were major injury accidents. The traffic study didn't allude to any specific safety concerns from any state standards outside of the conditions in the road manual with Cache County. So, condition number, okay, so condition number four and five are together. They have to do with the Nautica amendments and the Nautica subdivision. I don't know if any of this visually is helpful to pull up any of those. We don't need to, but if, if there is even our preliminary plat, we could pull up just as a reference that maybe, I'm a visual person, but that's okay. We have our road going through, I guess, where the red section is, just pretty much connecting to the existing.
Can you pull it up quick?
Yeah, absolutely.
Hey, while he's doing that.
Yeah.
I, I went out and looked at that road again, and I've done it, like, this is, so we've had, over the years, there's been multiple requests for development up there. But that road, is, is it true that there's parts of that road that's not even owned by the county? I'm looking at the plat map, and it shows that there could be some areas. I'm looking at the plat map, and it shows that there could be some areas.
There is a lot of previous pre-existing issues with that road to do with the dedications. Some pre-exist from twenty years ago, that I think Chris will be addressing slightly with the improvement of that. The county owns or has dedications on small parts of it, some of it is prescriptive easements, some of the easements align with where their existing road is now, some of them are outside. It's a little, yeah, we have a couple of visuals we can give everybody after, if that's helpful.
But my question for that is, so how do you, if, if, if there is some still, I mean, I don't know how the right of ways work and whatever else, over time, easements, if they become permanent, but if the county doesn't own some of this road, how do you, how are you able to travel it?
Just clarifying that if the county doesn't own the road, how are we or the public able to?
Are able to put more people on the road if you don't own, maybe Matt can talk to us about that. Go ahead, I just was curious, because as I, as I looked at the road, and you already said, I found it interesting that there was only two accidents, but probably because there's been, you know, fewer, but that road on some of them turns, it's, it's, it's pretty, pretty sketchy, you can't see, and narrower, but then when you look at it and you see that, especially on one of them turns, Mount Sterling Group shows their border to the, almost the east side of the road, I just was kind of curious how that all works.
Yeah, and it, it is definitely, the, the road would definitely be something that we would love to be able to have improved. We've expressed to the county that we're open to being able to participate in that. Based on, based on some Utah law, we are required to improve the road just for our proportion of the impact. So there's pre-existing conditions that technically would land on the liability of the county to be able to address those, that our development does not impact or affect, that we were going to talk about. And any proportional impact that we create, we've already been working with the county and are open to being able to help offset, mitigate, and be able to pay for that. I think that might, that may be a question that might be answered a little bit, in a little bit greater detail, in just a few minutes, if that's okay. Okay, so thi- this is the Saddle Ridge subdivision. So there's a small area that is up, kind of in the gray on the, the far left-hand side, that we are essentially just tying into one of the existing road. There was a, a first, when the county changed their amendments to allow for, essentially an additional lot, Nautica did their first amendment, from what we understand, that has been either ready to record, close to Mylar, or within some final comments with Spencer Butterfield for the last couple of months. We've been coordinating with Spencer, so we have applied our second amendment, which ties on to the end of the first amendment, just to get down to our Saddle Ridge property. The county asked us, we originally had this all together as one plat approval, the county asked us to separate it into two. So that's what we've done. So there's this kind of standalone, it's only a small section of road improvement, and then everything on the bottom left-hand corner there will tie into our main subdivision.
So you do meet the access? Fire access?
So the fire access and the improvement of sixty-four hundred west will be addressed by, by Chris. But as of right now, the roads and everything that we own and control will be to the full county wet standard, sixty-six foot dedications. It's just the pre-existing conditions of the road that's up on the north, sixty-four hundred south and sixteen hundred west. But, so on the fourth condition, we'll, we'll abide by everything within Nautica. It sounds complicated, but there's, it, it's just a matter of order. He'll, he'll record the first, we'll record our second, and then the Saddle Ridge subdivision would be recorded last, only on condition that the subdivision was actually approved. Condition, so six and seven, just talk about the water rights, which we will have, we have thirteen up there now, and we have an additional contract for ten, so twenty-three. We will close and purchase those, which are expensive, at the time we have the approvals. We respectfully worked with the county to not have to acquire those prior to approvals, and I think that's all been pretty clear and straightened out. Eight refers to a percolation test, which we will, which we will do. Ten and eleven are stormwater requirements, which we are okay with, and those will all be signed and agreed upon before final recording. Twelve, fifteen, and seventeen are the land disturbance permit, a licensed engineer signs our plat, and an encroachment permit will all be pulled, those are non-issues. Thirteen refers to, that the developers shall provide all the necessary right-of-way dedications. Road manual section, section two point four point one D specifically states the developer-controlled land shall be dedicated, which we would gladly accept that. Any land that we control will be dedicated as part of the recording. And then the last, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty are to do with a geo, a request for a geotechnical report, sensitive land areas analysis, and a fire protection report, all three of which we're happy to accommodate. Traditionally, those are provided in the final plat stage, and any issues that arise, we're happy to do that, but we have no major land, sorry, no sensitive lands outside of the slope, one or two other minor things, there's some FEMA flood planes over on the bottom by the river, but since no building lots are anywhere near those, those aren't.
Indicate that the parcels have ag protection area designations? Is that going to be changed or revised, or?
Connor, I don't know if you, if you were Angie, clarify that, but I just know that it's a comment that's on our plat, that it's in a protection area, and it may have.
A parcel, so.
Yeah, it may have a curfew.
Does an ag protection area allow for subdivisions?
Yes. Conservation easement does not, which is further south, but this one would, so long as it's noted on the plat, that buyers are buying into a protection.
Has to be removed from the ag protection, but.
That's what I would think.
But the property owner can.
Do that, I have a question. It's easy, it's easy to get it out.
Yeah, the ag protection area really just protects that property owner from perhaps development coming around it and then it being called out as a nuisance or something.
Correct.
But yeah, it's, we actually have one person in the county who's requesting removal of an ag protection area, and there's no fee, it just goes to council.
Yeah.
It's, it protects the property owner of that ag protection area more than precluding any development.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for staff, Angie. So, again, we, we've had applicants prior that have applied in this same area or below it or around it, that it runs in my mind that one of them may have even been approved, or they were working that direction, but they ran out of time, they didn't get it done in the timeframe. So, what I'm trying to clarify, if this was approved, don't they have one year to have all this stuff done, and if they don't, then they start over again?
Yeah, there is the option to, for a six-month extension, so they have a total one to eighteen months. But yeah, if that were to expire, and if the, any of these approvals, if the Nautica first expired, then that would have to be reapplied for, because they still need that access, and they still need that portion of the road to be accepted by the county, that's currently a private road into the subdivision, and then the second amendment, and then this one. So, yeah, as he was mentioning, as I mentioned, the Domino's kind of getting everything in order. Yeah, it could take easily that full year for a full eighteen months, but then if they all were voided or expired and needed to be reapplied for, it would all be under current standards, so.
Thanks.
Thank you, Angie. I didn't know on the ag protection, because we'd never brought it up, because it was just a small, easier to address, but, so for the most part, that's, that's all the comments. And then comments one to do with the, well, one and nine have to do with the fire access, and fourteen and sixteen have to do with the right-of-way dedications on sixty-fourth and the improvements of the road coming up, which I can let Chris address. Is there any other questions on any of the stuff that we brought up, just before he goes into that?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chris Hoagle. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Holland and Hart. I appreciate your time. I know you're, you're, you're just trying to do the right thing on this. As, as Christopher mentioned, I'm going to talk to you about the, the conditions imposed for a secondary access and the conditions imposed to improve sixty-four hundred south from its existing substandard condition. I, just put simply, you folks, we all, I take an oath, you take an oath to follow the constitutions that we're all under, Utah state law, and the, and the regulations as they exist when this application was filed, and under those sources, those, those conditions just cannot legally be imposed. Now, I laid this out in, in the letter that I sent, and I think it's in your packet, it's, it's part of this record on August first, that deals with the fire board and their decision, and section D one oh seven point one of the international fire code. So I, I laid all that out. I'm not going to repeat all that, I'm just going to kind of hit sort of the high points on that, and, and maybe we can have, if you want to have a discussion, I can try to answer questions that you have, happy to do that. But what I'm, what I'm trying to, what I'm, my point here, what I'm trying to say to you is, tho- those conditions just cannot, it, it's just the way it is, under the law that we're all sworn to follow. They can't be legally imposed. Let, let me start with D one oh seven point one of the international fire code. Now, I understand what Deputy Wynn said, and I understand what the fire board appeal said, but this body, this commission, is the land use authority on this particular application. That means you, you have to apply your, you have to apply the law as, as you're bound to do, based on your experience and your judgment, but we're all bound by the law. The fire board, Deputy Wynn, they may have, you know, they're obviously concerned about fire safety, and I appreciate that, but fire safety is not all we have to be concerned about. As I said, we all have to follow the law that we're sworn to uphold. And, and I don't need to tell you, you folks about the Utah state law, right, the County Land Use Development Management Act, you deal with that all the time. But what that says is that the property rights, the developer, property owner, has a right to develop property based on the regulations as they exist, you know, right? Not, not as we can imagine that we wish they would be, but as they exist at the time the application is filed. And not only that, I mean, you, you deal with land use regulations all the time. We wish they were more clear. We wish that the land use regulations that we're dealing with were written to directly apply better to the situation at hand, but you know what? The county council, they can't envision everything, they do the best they can, but they're, they're enacted and drafted the way they are. And under Utah law, that County Land Use Development Management Act, and the Utah Supreme Court, that's construed that over and over again, in each and every case. Land use regulations are construed strictly against land use restrictions and liberally in favor of what the property owner wants to do. So that's the lens that you have to look through when you construe D one oh seven point one. And I just don't think the fire board had that in mind. When you look at their decision from July third, they certainly didn't say, yeah, we understand how these are supposed to be construed, and that's what we're doing. They didn't go into that. So, and I'll tell you kind of where they, where they fell short, and where the staff report falls short, is there's D one oh seven point one, and there's two exceptions. There's not just D one oh seven point one that says, you know, developments of one or two family dwellings, where the number of dwelling units exceed thirty, shall be provided with two separate and approved fire access roads. That's not the end of it. Now, I know, earlier in the year, the Cache County Council reenacted that provision without the two exceptions, but that's after the Saddle Ridge application was unfilled. So you, you have to apply it with the two exceptions as if they're there, because it got changed after, right? And, and both of those, either one of those exceptions apply. You don't need to have both apply, you only need one. But in our case, I think you got to find that either one or both apply. Let me talk about the first one. The first exception says where there are more than thirty dwelling units, access from a single public or private fire apparatus access road, and all dwelling units are equipped throughout with an approved automatic sprinkler system in accordance with, and there's three separate sections there, access from two directions shall not be required. So in our case, I understand that there's already twenty-seven there. There's already twenty-seven homes accessed off of sixty-four hundred south, I get it. But our developments, the Saddle Ridge development, is not thirty or more, it's not above thirty, it's twenty-two. So, and then there's a, there's another international fire code provision that deals with when you have to retrofit existing structures, right? And it's one one zero three point five, and then there's some subsections, point one through point five. And, and it, that makes clear that the kind of structures that are already there are ones that don't have to be retrofitted, as if Saddle Ridge could do that anyway. But luckily, the IFC recognizes reality, and it doesn't make developers do the impossible and go back and retrofit existing structures, so it doesn't have to do that. Saddle Ridge is going to require that each and every one of the twenty-two units has sprinklers. And when you harmonize one oh seven point one with the other provision of the fire code, one one zero three point five, read them together, make sense of them both, you can't just look at one in isolation from the other, they go together. When you reconcile them and, and read them in harmony, exception one applies, because we're going to have each and every one of those twenty-two with fire suppression sprinklers. So that's exception number one. Exception number two also applies. Exception number two says, the number of dwelling units accessed from a single fire apparatus access road shall not be increased unless fire apparatus access roads will connect with future development as determined by the fire code official. So what it's saying is, you need two, unless, two accesses, unless there's going to be another one, another road will connect with future development. Now, I understand it says as determined by the fire code official, so the fire code official, Deputy Wynn, has a say in this, but I tell you, all the evidence in the record indicates that when future development happens, it will connect, it has to. That's what Cache County Code says. And, and you're used to dealing with this all the time, when you get a new development where that, where they're adjoining a pre-existing road, they got to connect to the pre-existing road. That's what's going to happen. And on top of that, we submitted statements in a letter from the neighboring property owners, and they say, yes, we're going to follow county code, we're going to work with the county, there will be a second apparatus access road when future development happens. And that's all exception number two requires. It doesn't say, it doesn't say you got to make sure future development happens next week, next month, it says another access road will come in with future development. You know, maybe now, in hindsight, we would like to see that language tightened up, but that's the way it is. And under Utah law, County Land Use Development Management Act, you have to apply exception number two as it's written. So with that, those exceptions, either one of those exceptions apply. So the, the condition about requiring a second access, that just can't legally be applied to this development application. Now, another basis for this requirement, this, this condition for a second access is what's cited in the staff report, it's section two point four, sub A, sub one, sub B. And what it says is, quote, "A development may be required to provide multiple access points if it is deemed necessary for health, safety, and welfare reasons," right? Now, that's pretty open-ended. That gives the county a heck of a lot of discretion to come in and say, well, yeah, we think for health, safety, and welfare reasons, you ought to put in a second road, or maybe a third road, or fourth or fifth. But you can't do that. The County Land Use Development Management Act says you can't make it up as you go along, right? You have to apply the land use regulations as they are when the application is filed. Now, it would be nice, I guess, if you could circumvent that by just enacting a land use regulation that says, you know, well, it's in the books, and it's here, and it's, it's there when you file your application, and it says, you have to do whatever we think is necessary. But, I mean, that, that doesn't hold water, that's not going to hold water against, against Utah law. And, 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 and that's, and that's been held that way in cases. And that's been held that way in cases in other states, right? Not in Utah, Utah hasn't dealt with that specific issue yet, but in other states, that has been held that a regulation like that is just too vague to apply. So, the condition about the second access, it's going to be safe, it's going to have sprinkler systems, when future development happens, another road will go in there, that's enough. The condition about having to improve substandard roads, now, this is something that's been done in other parts of the country, too, right? Governments, you know, they wish they could improve the roads and keep them up like they want, but, you know, money's tight, funds are limited, so what they try to do in some instances is say, well, when a new developer comes in, we'll make the new developer bring the substandard road up to where we like it, up to standard. You can't do that. Under the U.S. and the Utah constitutions, and the County Land Use Development Management Act, it's section seventeen, twenty-seven A, five oh seven, you can only impose conditions like road improvements that are required by the developer's project. So, the condition of sixty-four hundred south right now, Saddle Ridge didn't have anything to do with that, right? There may be some problems with sharp corners, or potholes, or whatever the situation is, but you can't impose that on Saddle Ridge as a condition, because they didn't cause it, and their development didn't cause that. Now, if they put in more houses, that requires it to go from a minor road to a major road, that's different, that can be imposed, because that incremental difference, what the road needs to do to handle the increased traffic, that is based on the impact, so that's okay. But bringing it up to where it should be right now, can't do that.
Connor, could you pull up maybe the road, just as visual reference for everybody? Just down on sixty-four, so we all know what we're talking about.
We definitely want to hear you guys, but just out of respect for the rest of our people here, and the rest of the things we've got to hear tonight, how much longer do you think you're going to be?
I'm done. I was just going to say, you know, to the extent the traffic impact study condition is based on finding out what needs to happen to the road to bring it up to where the county would like it to be, I mean, that's, you can't do that, because the way the road is right now, it's not based on the impact of this new development, it's based on what's happened, you know, already over time with the road. So, that's all I wanted to say. I appreciate your time.
Questions, anything legal you want to address any of that?
I guess, maybe what questions does the commission have? I guess the argument might take from the perspective is, I appreciate Mr. Olden, his comments, his application for his client and applicant in this case. The question about the standard here, I mean, this body is the decision maker here for the, as the land use authority here for this application, you take different parts of the piece of information you consider, and as you make that decision. Look at the, I guess ultimately when it comes to, I imagine they have questions about the fire, that's been brought up a lot, brought up here as well. I think ultimately the fundamental question will be is what this, and as Mr. Olden explained, yes, you are to apply the language as written in his letter, yes, it has been changed, we have to apply it at the time, when they applied their, when they submitted their application. So, you need to, on the record, decide essentially, does the fire code apply to them, do they meet any exceptions, and find it one way or another, particularly specifically why you're making those findings, if that makes sense? I think from the county attorney's perspective, it would be, I mean, again, it's your decision on what you want to do here. Now, when it comes to Utah law and everything else, as stated in there, in his letter, it does say, if a land use regulation does not plainly restrict a land use application, the land use authority shall apply the land use regulation in favor of the land use application. So, I think ultimately what the fire would come down to say is, it would apply language of that D one oh seven point one and the exceptions, they don't fit those, and so that's up for you to determine. And again, make those findings on the record as why you find it, they do or do not meet that, if that makes sense. I don't know if I have any other questions on that point, or anything else that was brought up, as far as the other main points, sticking point, I think that comes up to play here is with the road improvements and everything else. I think I maybe might want to ask Matt some questions from the public works side of things, that probably be why they want a little bit more information on the traffic study to determine what those impacts are there. I agree that, yeah, you can't impose the entire, make them fix up the entire road, right, but it's just that proportion of, I think they agree with that as well, whatever the proportion of cost is as well, but I don't know if we have that data, that information. I think maybe that's where a little bit of the rub is at this point as well. So, again, what other questions do you have? That's kind of my take on it.
My question is, staff's suggestion, with the information provided and digested, approve with conditions or continue? If the applicant is not willing to meet the conditions that we've, that staff has, and legal has proposed here, how do we proceed? There's, our hands are tied, we can't approve it.
So, also you can change the conditions, or you can modify the conditions if you want, that's up to you, as the commission decide. If you have approved it as is, then the ball basically would be back in their court, and they can say, thanks, we appreciate that, but they have a few opportunities, and they can say those conditions are due on us, and they can potentially go down that road as
Chair, may I? I would like to give our engineer time to address us on some things, as well as Mr. Wynn. I do have some questions on exception one and exception two that I'd like to hear from Mr. Wynn.
That's great.
He would like things a lot.
Let Matt go first.
So, Jason, on exception one, saying they're putting in sprinkler system, every one of these houses are going to have a well. If we go to a condition where there's a fire because of a storm and power goes out, it seems to me that a fire suppression has got to have a backup other than an individual well.
Correct.
And so, just because they say they're putting fire suppression into a house, I don't believe meets the fire code that we're talking about as covering during a fire. Am I wrong, or how do you interpret that?
Well, again, when they put a sprinkler system in, on a well, they've got to put a pump in. Obviously, a pump needs to run on electricity, just like you're saying, if power goes out and there's a fire, yeah, you're not going to have the pressure from the pump to...
So, we haven't covered the problem that we said would cover?
Right.
Would, so, you say a pump, would that also include a reservoir to supply that?
Yes, yes. You have to have, there's a tank that you have to, that goes with residential sprinkler systems, that you have to have, I believe it's, I can't remember the, right off the top of my head, how many gallons, but there's, you have to have a reserve tank that you can, the water will last ten minutes in a residential structure if a sprinkler head goes off.
Question I have is, if there is, everything is on their own wells, then there's no fire suppression system there, basically, because there's no fire hydrants, right?
Right.
So, you have to carry every gallon that you fight the fire with to this?
Correct.
To the site.
Yep, we bring all the water.
Which is the case with any home in the county.
Correct.
No fire hydrants in the county, so that's...
Benson, Benson does have...
Yeah, I mean, there are a few, Benson does, and, yeah, there's a few, yeah, there's a few of them out there.
Okay, you give us your determination of exception two for the second ingress and egress. I have held to that standard as long as I've been sitting on planning and zoning, so...
Yeah, so, the exception two is, you know, again, they're proposing twenty-two houses, but those twenty-two houses also stack up with the forty houses that are below them as well. So, there's sixty houses, technically, that are being built, or that are already there. And so, if there's more than thirty, you can have the sprinkler system, but there's...
Just a clarification, there would have fifty.
Or fifty, or however many, but it's above the thirty point, right?
Forty-nine.
It's required a second access.
But it's still the principle.
Thanks for your answers on that. Now, it's Matt's turn.
Been a lot of questions and a lot of points, so I'll field any questions you guys want, or expand on any of those topics you would request.
Tell us your reason for continuance. Does it give you more time to study everything else that would help?
I would, I would think that that might be obvious, right? Because we're still fighting or negotiating, however you want to term that, on what improvements are required for the lower portion of the road. I don't remember the gentleman's name, but he said if that road is changed from a minor to a major road, that that would be part of their requirements. Based on the traffic going from twenty homes to over, you know, forty homes, that changes the road designation in the county, and normally we would design that for a minor local road as it is, and the traffic, they're pushing that to a major local. So, while we agree that they didn't create all those impacts, what we're saying is that the county code says that no development shall be approved on inadequate roads or access to those developments. So, the county code is telling me, as the engineer, is that, hey, until that road, or there's some kind of negotiation, or there's something to fix, that road getting to this development, that it should not be approved. And right now, we're still debating on what that looks like and whose responsibilities that is. So, if you take into account that we do all of our work, we do our engineering, their traffic impact study, we do safety studies, whatever it is, and this development is ten percent of those issues, they should pay ten percent. Well, who pays the other ninety percent? The county? Okay, when? How? So, you guys as planning commission need to remember that, once this is approved and they're going forward, that the liability of the safety of that road, the access to that road, all falls to the county. And until we can safely and adequately, for health and welfare, get people to their homes, away from their home, trash services, bus, all those things, right now, we don't have a plan. So, I don't have any issues with their development, but it's hard to give a condition or accept that responsibility as the county engineer or the public works director to say, all right, because of their development, now the county needs to go down and improve this road to eighty percent, and now that's, we don't know what that is, we don't have a timeframe, so do we continue to let houses go up there and, over the next ten years? So, we're just saying, hey, we need to have these discussions, and a lot of these discussions have been taking place through attorneys and not necessarily with the public works department. We're not opposed, we're not saying that they're responsible for all that, but they are pushing that traffic volume up to where it changes the code, it changes the safety standards, it changes the dynamics of that road, to a point that they are impacting even the pre-existing one with additional traffic. And until those things are situated, whether that's a development agreement, however, these are growing pains of the county, and right now, we don't really have a good method or a process to take care of that, so...
Just to clarify, what is the length of the road outside of the development that would, that would be, would need to be improved?
Quite a bit. Um, yeah, you can click on it, it might tell you, it might be a half a mile, go down Lower Conner, other way you went.
So, from here...
Basically, from there up to where you start to get to the old Saddle Ridge, or the old Nautica subdivision.
So, is that a, is that a half a mile?
Click on the road itself, and it might tell you. I don't know, I'm going to guess, I would have guessed a half a mile, but...
Can I clarify something?
It's more than a, more than a block.
Yeah, it's more than a block, so, but I think, I think the county should know going forward of what are, what are you, what stipulations are you putting on the county to make sure that the health and safety for all the residents up there is being watched out for. I'm not disagreeing that it, again, not disagreeing that it's not a hundred percent of their, you know, it's, if we tried to give them a hundred percent of that, that would be an exaction, but there is some impact, where they're essentially doubling the traffic up that road, that there needs to be some kind of consideration for what impacts they're putting on that road.
Matt, where part of that road appears to be private, does that restrict or limit either the county, or the applicant, or somebody else from improving the road?
So, a lesson in prescriptive use is probably well outside of the length you guys want to stay here, but the county does have a prescriptive use then, through there, so the public does have a right to travel that road, you know, to a certain extent, the county can do some improvements on that. I don't think that we're talking necessarily about, you know, a big issue with that in some areas, but if we have to realign the road, if we have to widen the road substantially, yeah, that will become an issue, and that may, even where we don't have a deeded, dedicated right-of-way down there, that could force the county into some kind of eminent domain, worst-case scenario.
But that is a concern, because right now, today, if in one of them turns or areas, the hills, where it's narrower, or maybe deemed potentially more dangerous, would you be comfortable to go and start working on it, or do you have restrictions?
I think Andrew would say that that's probably outside our current prescriptive use. We always use the example of a Walmart, right? If one day the Walmart traffic warns the road to be X-wide, and you have a little teeny gravel road there, you don't have a prescriptive use to go widen that out to, you know, fifty feet wide, so, there's some, again, it's probably outside the realm of this meeting to discuss all the intricacies of the prescriptive use, but yeah, there's risk there for the county, too.
Thanks, Matt.
You're welcome.
Would it be okay for one quick clarification, just from a cost?
Sure.
Connor, there's an overlay that has the road dedications. Just to be clear, the issue with this road isn't cost. Legally, as Chris mentioned, we're only, by Utah law, required to pay for our portion of the road. We've offered the county to pay for above our portion, if the county needed that, to make sure that the road could be improved. The issue we have is with the dedications that are existing, or that are missing up to this date. It'll be on the GIS under right-of-way, or, okay.
One sec, sorry.
Nope, that's okay. So, we've been more than willing to be able to help pay for our portion, or work with the county, to make sure that these improvements can be done from a financial perspective, is whether it's in the form of a concession or something else. Just the legal, the way it stands now is that when this was approved originally, the county never collected the correct dedications, so we can't force these other owners that we don't own to give us more than the twenty feet of prescriptive road that's there. That's the general issue. That liability would go to the county to be able to get, and we're talking about going from twenty to twenty-four feet. It's twenty feet now, it'll be twenty-four feet with some shoulders, which I think a major goes all the way to thirty-two. We're just asking to bring the substandard road to the current minor local, and then we would be glad to be able to help upgrade it and pay. And the fires, while we'd be willing to pay for, whether it's a community cistern or other mitigatory measures for the sprinklers, the issue just that was, we weren't allowed to apply either of the exceptions. So, if the exceptions are applied, we're more than willing to provide the issue that was addressed earlier.
So, would you restate that, a community, a community...
And I apologize, I was trying to be fast, because I told you I would be. The issue with the fire was, and it has never been brought up specifically with the sprinklers coming from the well, we've offered and/or are open to providing some type of a community cistern that would have a holding capacity that in the event of a fire, that would be extra water that wouldn't have to be pulled directly from a well or the individual home, would require an HOA or a management agreement, but the fire board of appeals was simply that we did not apply, or we, exception one or two, we just simply didn't, we didn't qualify for, which before we were able to have our board of appeals, the Cache County Council revoked those very exceptions that we applied under, kind of giving a little merit to the point of why they existed in the first place. Thank you.
Chair. I believe Mr. Wynn's got a rebuttal on that one, don't you?
As far as the cistern, they want to put up, you know, a water system up there, I've never mentioned that to me, so, that is something new, but that would be something that, yeah, if we, if we had oodles of, if we had water up there to fight fires, then we could maybe relook at that, but, yeah, so, that's why, that's my rebuttal.
Matt has... Matt has another comment.
Jason, Jason did, so he's gotta come and take his turn.
Can't, can't leave me out if you le, if you let Jason come back. I did want to just point out, one of the things of the code, that they mentioned in the road manual, it talks about a secondary access. And I don't necessarily disagree with their argument that that is vague, but we gotta think of road construction, we gotta think of earthquakes, we gotta think of all these other things. And it wasn't too long ago during a snowstorm that someone had an accident on that road. There was a bus stuck, there was about three or four families stuck on that in a, in a blizzard, and there was no way for emergency vehicles to even get to some of those people. So I think that if that is vague and, and that's challenged, and we're not successful in upholding what the, the road manual says on there, we need to look at changing that because, you know, that's why we're here, that's why the county's main purpose is to provide for public health, safety and welfare. And at some point, you can't continue to have one ingress and egress to a certain number of homes, so. While fire has been the hot topic of that secondary access, I think that there's a lot of other reasons why that falls in the road manual, and again, those are other natural disasters, there's road construction issues, there's all kinds of different events, and if we need to list them in the road manual, so be it, but, but I think we are getting to a point where we are getting a lot of homes, you're getting a lot of families up there, and the health, safety and welfare of those people needs to be looked at, and a secondary access would solve a lot of those issues, so.
Matt, before you, before you go down, would you say in, in its current configuration, current prescriptive easement across there, can this, can this meet the road standard without, without acquiring more property in one way or another by the county?
It depends on, I was, I was giving someone a hypothetical today that if we reduce the speed to five miles an hour, we'd probably all agree that it's safe. So hypothetical, there's probably a, some scenario where that could probably meet the health and safety for the road. But to what extent is that acceptable, to what risk?
Change this to a, to a large, a large collector, is that the right?
Just a major local road.
Major local, sorry, major local, with the current property that's there, is it possible? For the current prescriptive easement?
That's a good question. I don't, I don't have an answer. Right now, part of that traffic impact studies needs to kind of look at the safety, and I think we welcome a discussion from their engineers so that we can all, you know, get on the same page and find out what those safeties are. I mean, the applicant said he's willing to help pay for that, but no one knows what those costs are. That, that has not been looked at or addressed, so. The other.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, lots of, lots of questions on this one. Commissioners, how do we want to proceed on this one?
If we, if we had time to redraft a number of conclusions or conditions on there, I think there's, at least for me, some that could make it comfortable, it may not make the applicant all the way comfortable, right? I think like what Jason said, if we add some stuff in there for some of the fire code stuff, some, some onsite storage so the fire requirements can be met, they have more water up there, that one probably could, I think we need to have some more discussion with Matt. Or, or leave the road stuff in there and they have to hash it out before it's settled. Because there's still, there's still room for some, I think, either side to have the attorney win. In, in the long battle, I guess, right? Because there is some, some, I guess, leverage for, for Matt as, as the county engineer to use some of that, I guess, not super clear language in current code for health and safety of the community. And so I think the current road ones in there meet that. If they could have those conversations and figure that out, maybe we can make those easier conclusions. But I don't know that, at least for me, I don't have the time to go in there and then write my definition of why I'm going with the exceptions or not the exceptions to put in those conclusions to approve or deny it currently, so.
We would be here for a lot longer, wouldn't we, to draft all of those?
Well, and yeah, and we'd need like six of us from the audience at the table too to draft them, I think to the agreement of everybody.
Are you saying you want to continue it?
I'm saying, for me, I think we need to, to get the right language in there so it's better for all sides, I think. That would be my recommendation.
Do, do I read the notes correctly that it's, it's already continued like from July? So it goes to October, July was a ninety days.
We still have one more month.
Potentially, or should we just go ahead and make it longer, give everybody enough? They can come back.
Sooner.
Sooner, sure. I don't know, just throwing that out there.
I'm good with either.
Make a motion.
I don't think it's going to be easy for next morning, but we still got half the agenda left.
If we save ourselves future work in the future, I, I realize that the applicant wants to get this done, but if, if, if the attorneys can't get it done, I, I don't even know what the answer is, we're not qualified to make those exclusions or whatever. So I would move that we extend this out another ninety days, the Saddle Ridge subdivision two thousand twenty-five, and hope that the applicant, their attorneys, the county and their attorneys can come to a consensus.
So continue it up for up to ninety days?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright. Next item on the agenda is number seven, Questar Gas Company DBA Enbridge Gas Utah conditional use permit. Yeah, for sure.
Can we just want to take ten minutes or something like that?
Um, we could, we could do.
Hey, we want to do a five minute recess?
I think it'd be a great idea.
Okay, alright, we will take a five minute recess.
Eight, eight o'clock. Standard time, we'll be getting there, don't worry.
Usually.
Learning a lot. Hopefully I haven't appeared like a completely. So what do we got? Questar, Suncor, and Nixon?
Yeah, there's gonna be.
Nixon's out there.
Yeah, all this time, Brady, we never turned our. No one knows who we are, maybe that's good.
You did that on purpose.
Yeah. Total throw eggs at me that way. Got a lot of these pros for getting to do that.
All sounds good.
I really don't know about this one. Gravel gravification.
It's messy.
Man, how did it come up at for thirty years? To me, that seems like. We'll find out.
Just go raid them in there, that's what I do.
In memory of Bill Olson. Know he's still alive.
Andrew, did you ever look into any more?
Meeting, rest of the meeting would probably go faster had we not taken her recess.
Applicant, I can see going out to dinner with him, but meeting with him before a meeting? They responded, like they do that all the time in other cities. I'm like, well, I'm just going off current recommendation, and so.
Basically what was provided to you, and everything else, that's what we're trying to do.
Yeah. But, but if you, if they just wanted to meet and talk about their project and give them.
We didn't ask if anybody knew one of the comments.
And, but if, well, kind of, once it's on the agenda, kind of, that's when it's like, you need to talk about it here.
I know.
That's what I thought, okay.
You're right, normally.
Commissioners, they reached out to, he continued to call and text after that, trying for a conversation, I'm like, I'll see you on Thursday.
I just wouldn't, wouldn't, when we made our decision.
I don't want to get myself in trouble or the county and say, oh, now that you did that, you got to approve it because you messed up some other rule.
When I was on there, Josh Renner said.
That's what made me think.
Talk to the relevant services, and they can't talk to a commissioner.
That's gotta be a.
That's.
Which doesn't restrict.
Information that the other commissioners didn't hear.
It definitely, I mean, I don't know if some of them would show a different flex if they didn't know the risk. Because I think one access is huge, we cannot overlook.
If we could bring our attention back up here, thank you. Connor, I believe we are on the item number seven, Questar Gas Company DBA Enbridge Gas Utah conditional use permit.
Hey, just so we can proceed, if you guys could either go out in the hall or let us hear, thanks.
Hey, Brady. Alright, so the Questar Gas Company DBA Enbridge Gas Utah conditional use permit is a request to operate a natural gas gate station metering facility. It qualifies as use type five six one O utility facility distribution. As some background, this project's tied to the Green Gas USA Hyrum LLC CUP, which was approved by the Planning Commission on July tenth. That's basically just a request to operate a gas system that updates or upgrades biogas that's produced by JBS's anaerobic digesters. The parcel is legal as it matches the configuration it had on August eighth, two thousand and six. The adjacent uses, the adjacent parcels are generally a mix of industrial and residential uses to the south and agricultural uses to the north. The Hyrum boundary city, or the Hyrum city boundary is located five hundred feet to the south of the subject parcel. Operation, it'll be in operation twenty-four seven. There won't be any regular employees on site, but it will have a routine inspections for safety and maintenance. In terms of structures, there'll be four buildings, a control building, an analyzer building, an odorant building and a meter and regulator building. In terms of signage, it'll be pretty minimal, only things that are required by federal, state and county code, and then whatever Enbridge gases is their standards. No waste will be produced. In terms of roads, twelve hundred west is what they have access onto. It's a major collector and it's county owned. It provides access to JBS agricultural lands and serves as a through access from Hyrum to Nibley. Has a minimum access spacing of three hundred and fifty feet for public and private roads and two hundred feet for commercial, residential or farm accesses. Is maintained by the county year round. Is currently twenty-four feet wide, has a ninety-nine foot right of way, a three to four foot paved shoulder, a two foot gravel shoulder, a variable clear zone and is paved. Is considered substandard as the gravel shoulder and clear zone. In terms of parking, it's exempt from a parking analysis as the use type five six one O utility facility distribution is exempt. The fire district didn't have any comments, but they'll review zoning occurrences that come in. Solid waste disposal, the responsibility of the applicant. In terms of detrimental effects in sensitive lands, air quality is a concern, but that's just mitigated by best management practices during construction. And there is a wildfire hazard, so they'll have to prepare a fire protection report. Noticing was completed on August twenty-second, the agenda for the meeting was posted on August twenty-second. We haven't received any public comments, and staff recommends approval with the nineteen listed conditions.
Okay, thank you, Connor, appreciate it. Would the applicant like to speak about your proposal?
Sure. I'm Charlene King, I'm, I work for Enbridge Gas. This facility is being done in conjunction with a development that Green Gas is currently planning. We will be the receiver of their biogas product, and then we will prepare it for distribution out into the surrounding area. That's pretty much.
How much, how much gas is produced from this, from this?
And while you're at it, just tell us a little bit about how it works. Yeah, like where's it coming from, where's it, yeah.
Yeah, for sure, so Andrew Asplund, Enbridge Gas Engineering. How much gas is being produced? It's an average of about four hundred deth per day. Max seven hundred-ish deth down to, that's in the summary.
That in, in the.
Something we would understand.
Number of homes or whatever that that could serve.
Um, I don't know average numbers of homes, it's a small amount. So in terms of Hyrum overall, I think it produces less than five percent of what total goes at the Hyrum on a yearly basis. So it's a very small percentage, mostly gas that is being used in the community is brought in on another feeder line. So what is going on is Green Gas currently, JBS, the beef plant down there, processes, I don't know exactly how they process, but I assume it's cow manure and turns it into biogas, which is, they are currently burning, but in order for them to receive credits for that burning, they need to upgrade the gas and add it to a pipeline quality so that they can become a transportation customer, that's where we come in. So, um, Green Gas is the upgrader, we are the receiver of the gas as was stated earlier. And the gas will be brought to our system through a regulator station that currently exists in Hyrum for the most part. In terms of public safety, we blend the gas at Hyrum, so in all reality, where you're not getting a hundred percent RNG into your home, the max you could get is forty percent, according to what we're doing. So, yeah, that's kind of the basis of the project. What's going on down, what's happening at our facility is, we are receiving the gas at a certain pressure, we need it to be at a certain pressure to go into our system. We regulate the gas if it exceeds the pressure, because we are only rated to a certain M A O P in our pipeline. And then we meter the gas, those are the main things, and then we also provide gas to Green Gas for their operations.
So it kind of, it comes to you in a usable state, is that right?
Yeah, so we are regulated, we have a tariff that's negotiated by the state, so the Enbridge Gas tariff, which is on our website, their gas has to meet that tariff quality standard in order to be injected into our pipeline. Their gas has to meet that tariff quality standard in order to be injected into our pipeline.
So this process, would it, would it filter or use some process to remove contaminants, or is it just getting it up to pressure?
Yeah, um, so biogas in its raw form is somewhere, I think it's like fifty-five percent methane. In order to be tariff quality gas, it has to be, I think, ninety-three percent methane. So that's the major part of the process. They're also removing harmful gases like hydrogen sulfide from the gas. That's part of their upgrading equipment, that's all happening on their facility to make it pipeline quality, so...
So would that be flared off? Is that, you know, what happens to the hydrogen sulfide when you, is it flared, or...
Yeah, these are great questions. Once again, that is part of their facility. What I know is, there's a knockout system that they're using, so I don't think it's actually producing any... Consumable objects. I think it's all handled there on facility, and there's nothing released into the air. But, once again, not our facility, so I couldn't tell you much about.
Are you guys familiar with and in agreeance with the nineteen conditions and three conclusions?
Yes.
Let's get it done.
Great.
Thank you. Heard any discussion on this one? We have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the Questar Gas Company DBA Enbridge Gas Conditional Use Permit with the nineteen conditions and three conclusions?
We have a motion, we have a second? I'm sorry, we have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving on. Number eight, the Suncor Edge Excavation Vehicle Repair Shop Conditional Use Permit.
Yes, so this is actually an amendment of an original twenty-twelve CUP for the site, for the sale and storage of landscaping and building materials, which would currently fall under use types thirty-four hundred, storage and warehousing. You may recall that Edge Excavation came in a couple of years ago to expand their operation to the west. That conditional use permit was never recorded and is void. As you can see from the aerial, they have been operating on there, storing materials. The particular project we're, or property we're looking at now is the one that's along the highway. It is currently being operated separately from the parcels to the west. It's being operated by Suncor Construction and Materials, Inc. And so, as part of an enforcement action and a desire to build a new vehicle repair shop, because their one within Logan City limits is being demolished next year. We have, we felt that we could proceed with the CUP amendment on this property. And then concurrently, there is an enforcement case being pursued on the properties to the west that are, don't have a current or approved conditional use permit there. So just to let you know, there is that separation.
Angie, so, so do we have two separate owners then?
So the property owner's the same, but the front property along the highway is being leased to Suncor, so it's being operated separately from the operation in the back. And yeah, it's that operation in the back by Edge Excavation that is currently under a co-enforcement case.
But the front parcel did receive proper authorization to be there.
Yeah, so they have a current two thousand and twelve CUP for this parcel here. And they are not asking for any changes to that CUP, so they're going to have to remain in compliance with those conditions. So the only thing that's being amended as part of this one is the request to add that additional use type, the general vehicle repair, so that they can construct a maintenance building to service primarily their vehicles and construction equipment that they operate. This will not be open to the general public, and because of that, UDOT is not requiring any improvements, and the existing county road along the north boundary will not require any additional improvements either. But again, the condition is explicitly that they do not do general vehicle repair for the public, just for their own vehicles that are used on site and land, uh, equipment that they use in their construction business.
And that, sorry, just to follow up on the issue with the west parcel or west CUP?
Yeah.
It's a separate CUP?
So there's currently not a CUP now, but when they came in a couple of years ago, it was a separate.
They applied for a CUP on that, west. That's not, that's what's not in compliance, and is it, like, none of the conditions are met, or is there one or two sticking?
So it was primarily an issue with the wetlands and doing a wetland delineation, and now the Army Corps is involved in doing some work, but they're continuing to operate outside of that, so... So I think that covers the basis, and the structure is, they described it and provided elevations for, is kind of Conex boxes with a metal shed. It's not clear, I haven't heard from building department, if that would actually be approved in that type. So we're not approving a specific type of building, but just in general, a six thousand square foot maintenance building. And then as they work through the building permit process, they can determine if that's going to meet the building, the occupancy for that building type, so... But again, with that, there's just a few conditions of approval, again, the main one just being no general vehicle repair for the public, and that will allow them to kind of proceed without any major improvements to the, the roads or getting additional UDOT approval. If you have any questions, I can answer those.
How big was the building again?
It's about six thousand is what they're describing.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, council members or commission members, so my name's Greg Flynn, I represent Suncor, formerly Sunrock, if you're familiar with that name. Thank you for your time this night, tonight to look at this amendment, we've reviewed the staff report. Obviously, a lot of it's the conditions that she just mentioned, which is, we're servicing our own vehicles, we're currently in Logan, that site will be demolished come January, so we're, we appreciate staff working with us to come up with a solution here to have a temporary, consider it temporary till we eventually get a, we'll say a more permanent facility up here, either by acquisition or, or building one. But we think this is a good solution for us in the interim, as that building comes down, to be able to come over here and, and build this structure and, and operate this. So happy to answer any questions, we'll work with staff to meet the other conditions or the, the next steps, I'll say the application zoning clearance and that sort of thing, so...
Any questions?
Yeah, I was going to ask, where's your existing facility in Logan?
It is just north of six hundred south, or six hundred north. It's the big, I'm not, it's from here, so I'm trying to, I drove right past it when I, when I came in here, but it's, what's the big? Schreiber's, I was like, I was gonna say, yeah, just south, it's right into Schreiber's right there. It's kind of tucked back in, like you can't really see it from either road, actually.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Big, just, Mr. applicant, Mr. Flint, you did say that you're familiar with and comfortable with the ten conditions, three conclusions? You're, you're comfortable with all that?
Yeah.
Would you just ask if there's anybody here? Thank you.
Is there anyone here to comment that would like to comment on this conditional use permit?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Approval.
I'd take my turn, if someone else wants to use theirs, go ahead, Val.
I like yours. Get or don't.
Ten, ten conditions and two conclusions.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next one is item number nine, Nixon and Nixon, Inc., Conditional Use Permit Revocation. Lots of billable hours in this room tonight.
Hey, recognizing... It's almost eight o'clock.
Oh. Commissioner Sand brings up a point of, a point, a point of order that we are approaching our deadline. We need to plan to extend the, the meetings, we're, as we're getting ready for this. Any, would Commissioner like to make a motion?
Extend to eight-thirty?
You are optimistic.
Eight forty-five, okay.
To eight forty-five?
Eight forty-five.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Commissioners, thank you for your time. My name is Jares Kendall, I am a county attorney, one of our civil attorneys for the county, and we're just going to present on the issues related to the Nixon CUP revocation. Obviously, you haven't decided to revoke, that's not what we're saying is happening, but I'm here to speak on that. The, the issues before the, the commission really are about access and the change in the nature of use. And, and for us to understand truly what's going on, I have to go through a timeline, I have to share with you when this all started and where we've ended up. So I'll try and, and be considerate of the time, but we have to go through the facts, because the facts inform what our legal analysis is and the reasons that we've made some of the conclusions that we have. So this goes back all the way to October twenty-third, nineteen eighty-four, that's over forty years ago. The county commission, which was the county's legislative body at the time, approved a rezone for Nixon and Nixon, which I'll just refer to as Nixon from here on out. They approved an agricultural zone to be put into a planned unit development zone. Now, what we have is on, on your screen, you'll see, and, and this is on paper too, so if you, if you want to look at the screen, you can, if you like paper more, it's there for you. This is part of the information that we have, this is the records we have on the PUD application. You might be asking why, what, how does this relate to the, the CUPs? Well, this drives the CUP in nineteen eighty-four. So one of the stipulations for the rezone was for Nixon to provide a UDOT-approved turn lane. This was a stipulation, as you can see up here, we have it highlighted, this was a county commission proceeding of the public hearing for Nixon to receive the PUD rezone. Under there, it says Yates moved, he was one of the commissioners, that the rezone request be approved with the following stipulations. And number four is really what I pointed out, that a UDOT-approved turn lane be provided. And then the motion passed unanimously. So ever since nineteen eighty-four, there has been this UDOT turn lane that was considered for this PUD development. On our next document, you'll see, I'll put that up. This is going to be part of the application material for the rezone, this is, shows the PUD site, the development. In this, th- these are involving some of the, the parcels at hand here. On there, you'll see that there's a portion that says gravel, that is the nineteen eighty-four CUP. And we'll talk about that in a little bit, but that's the portion of this map that we're talking about. Then phase two is, is part of Nixon's parcel, parcel ten, and then above that, parcel three. And then phase one is, is parcel three, and phase three right there is parcel three. All of that butts up to highway ninety-one. Now, we're going to move into the actual CUP, so on December fifth, nineteen eighty-four, the Planning Commission at the time approved the CUP for Nixon for twelve and a half acres on parcel ten, which is now parcel forty-nine. As stated in the request, so this is the gravel pit request from Nixon to the Planning Commission. The, the request indicated that the primary purpose will be road construction for the planned unit development area. So the reason I showed you the planned unit development, so you can have that context to see that the CUP was for them to get a permit to be able to extract for their PUD, for the planned unit development. And, and that, that, that they were going to construct a road for that, that unit development. Nixon also indicated, as point number four of that request, on this same page here, and highlighted, that a private road will extend north to the PUD and thence west to the, to highway ninety-one. So it was anticipated under this CUP that there was going to be a road created through all of Nixon's parcels. And that was, those were conditions of, or what was presented to the Planning Commission, and then the Planning Commission approved the CUP with that condition, that a private road will extend north to the PUD and thence west to the highway. So if we go to the next page, Ronnie. These are commission meeting minutes, so this explains what was going on in that meeting. So the primary purpose, so, so basically, the Planning Commission adopts in their meeting minutes, the primary purpose for the gravel will be road construction for the planned unit development area, recently rezoned immediately to the north and west. And then number four is that a private road will extend north to the PUD and thence west on highway ninety-one. The PUD is all of Nixon's property, it's all of those parcels that we've talked about, and that goes up through, those are parcels and then left to the highway. So that was one of the conditions that was part of that CUP. Then we're going to go to July second, nineteen eighty-seven. Nineteen eighty-seven, Nixon sold parcel forty-nine, so it was actually still part of parcel ten, but when he sold the twelve and a half acres that was labeled as gravel, it became parcel forty-nine. Sold that to LeGrand Johnson Construction Company. And so in nineteen eighty-seven, that became parcel forty-nine. It became parcel forty-nine, and it, it went under the ownership of LeGrand Johnson. So nineteen eighty-seven, not long after the CUP, LeGrand Johnson now has ownership of, of that parcel and, and has the rights to the CUP to continue extracting and so forth. Then on June sixteenth, nineteen ninety-three, LeGrand Johnson enters into an agreement with Cache County. And this, this agreement is going to be really important to Cache County and what we're arguing here today. This agreement shows that up to this point of this agreement, which was entered into in nineteen ninety-three, so almost ten years after the CUP was offered, one of the recitals indicates that Johnson desires access from its parcel to US Highway ninety-one for purpose of the extraction, removal, and transportation of gravel from its property. So we, what we learn is that there is no access at this time, that that, that road that was under the CUP was, was never created and that John, in order for Johnson to be able to extract, he's asking the county to be able to produce or construct this road. The agreement also, under section one, so right here, you have section one on permission, it states that Johnson has the permission to access parcel forty-nine over and across parcel fourteen to and from US Highway. So what this shows is LeGrand Johnson, so far, is, is requesting and then receiving access through the county's parcel, which is, I believe, parcel fourteen, yes, parcel fourteen. So the agreement is clear, and under section two, it states that the access is not a public access, nor open to other commercial vehicles. So Johnson is the only one whose commercial vehicles can be on there, and the access is only, is, is private, it's not a public access. It also establishes that the agreement does not constitute a permanent grant of easement. So there's no, Johnson does not have an easement, he, he does not have a permanent access, it's just access that's permitted under the agreement. just access that's permitted under the agreement. Additionally, the agreement, under Section 3 there, gave Johnson permission to construct and maintain a roadway across the county's property. So for Johnson to be able to have this access, he is the one who has to construct this property, or, excuse me, this road and this roadway. And it's Johnson who does construct that roadway. Johnson is also the one who retained the responsibility of maintaining that road, securing the road, and covering all expenses related to the road that were reasonably necessary and requested by the county. And so the county clearly is the one who still has control over this access, they're just giving permission for Johnson with these parameters that are given to Johnson. And finally, the agreement was very clear, and under Section 6, that this agreement is non-assignable without the written consent of both parties. So for this agreement to be assigned to anyone else, it would have to be consented to by the county and also by Johnson. We're going to go ahead and forward now to July 15th, 2008, and this is actually a letter of agreement between Nixon and Johnson. And what this agreement, as far as I can tell, reading through it, is an agreement between Johnson and Nixon for Johnson to continue doing operations on Nixon's property that is now parcel number 10. So Johnson is doing some work north of his parcel on parcel 49 into Nixon's parcel, is what this agreement seems to be saying. You know, it makes the, this is how much it's going to cost, this has all the terms of that agreement. And then down further, ironically, this arrow was not meant for today, this was done many, many years ago, but that is the point that the county wants to point out. It says Nixon were assigned to have access to said property to extent Johnson can convey using road Johnson built to transport gravel from site. So this agreement between Nixon and Johnson recognizes that Johnson is the one who built the road, that Johnson can only convey any rights that we have. And under the agreement that we have with Cache County and Johnson, it's a non-assignable right unless there's consent from the county. So this agreement shows a number of things. It shows that Johnson was still operating on parcel 49 in 2008. It shows that Nixon recognized Johnson was the one operating on that parcel, and that Nixon allowed Johnson to operate on Nixon's property, and that Johnson is the one who would have been using the county's road under the access agreement. So so far, Johnson is still the one using access, this is several years after, you know, we're getting to be 20 years after, and Johnson is the one who has access. The agreement, and I already covered that, sorry. So it also shows that Nixon recognized Johnson as the one who built the road, and this also shows that Johnson is the only conveying, is only conveying access to the extent Johnson can convey. We're going to go ahead and forward now to April 14th, 2017, a CUP for parcel 10, and a portion of parcel three was then granted to Nixon. The CUP did not apply to parcel 49, Johnson still owned that parcel in 2017. Right here, this just shows, if you go down to the bottom, you show the findings of fact, number one, the last sentence, it says this request does not include the existing extraction operation on parcel 49 to the south. So just making it very clear that those parcels are still separate under this CUP. As we go into the next document, Nixon represented to the county in its letter of intent, the access was through 6800 North, which ends on county property, where the paved road meets dirt and does not continue to parcel 49. So 6800 North is a paved road, it goes maybe 500 or so feet, I could be off, it doesn't go the full extent to the parcel. And so the access actually doesn't go all the way to parcel 49. However, in two exhibits that were produced to the county, Nixon represented that it had access to Nixon's parcel through Johnson's road, the same road that Johnson executed in agreement with the county to construct and maintain. And this is one of those maps, it's not as clear on the screen, but you have it on your paper there if you want. It's showing, in the center there, it says access road, and that's the road that we have today. If you go into GIS, you have some copies of the GIS map right there, that's how the road looks today for the most part, it's the dirt part of that road. That's not 6800 North, that's a private road on Cache County's land that goes, that Johnson built, and we know is private because the county did not agree for that to be a public And then this is just another document that was presented to the county showing that there's access. Now, in Section 11 of this conditional use permits findings, the county relied on Exhibit D to indicate that there was access through county property, Nixon's property. Now, I'll point out that in this, the county is never saying that, yes, Nixon has access, it's just saying there is access, right here, number 11, access to the site is from Smithville Pit Road, a county road at approximately 6800 North. This county employee was just simply indicating that there was access. Right now, at this point, under the CUP, the only access that was permitted was the access that Johnson had. Johnson still had access to that, but Nixon did not. And then in Section 14, the county further relied on an access agreement with the county for access to the excavation area, which, again, the only agreement that was in place was the agreement with Johnson. So that agreement cannot apply to Nixon because that agreement was never made with Nixon, it was never consented to to be assigned to Nixon, and the information that was presented to the county was as if there was access through that road, but there was no legal, legitimate access that was provided to Nixon at that time. The only person who had, or business who had access was Johnson. Finally, I want to go to our last document that we have in the timeline, this is September 6th, 2022. This is when Johnson sold his parcel, parcel 49, to Nixon through a quitclaim deed. This was approximately five years after Nixon got a CUP for parcel 10 and part of parcel three. This was in September, on September 6th, 2022. So Johnson had access arguably up until September 22nd. In fact, he probably could still use that agreement because it hasn't technically terminated, but he has no need to access that property for the purposes under the agreement. So that agreement, as far as Johnson is concerned, is no longer applicable because he doesn't own that property anymore. But it is important to understand that Johnson owned this property even through the time that they had the CUP and to the time that he sold it back to Nixon in September 2022. And at that time, and ever since, there has never been an agreement, there's never been an assignment for that access to Nixon. So we go to county code 176050. A conditional use permit may be revoked by the land use authority if the land use authority finds that one or more of five conditions exist. Now, the county agrees with Nixon that the code states the planning commission may revoke a CUP. So it is up to the planning commission to determine whether you will revoke this. It does not require you to, even if you find that there's conditions that are to be revocable. However, the county believes that the non-compliance on the part of Nixon is such that Nixon cannot operate under their CUPs without coming into compliance by getting a viable access through their property. So I'm going to go to the first CUP, which is 1984. There are two issues of non-compliance that we've presented, and the first is the nature of the use for which the conditional use permit was granted has changed. The primary purpose or nature of the use for this conditional use permit was for road construction for the PUD, the planned use unit development area that was rezoned immediately to the north and west. This was indicated in both Nixon's request and during the planning commission meeting where the CUP was approved in the documentation that we've provided to you. While other development projects were permitted under the CP, and the county recognizes that, these other development projects were subordinate to the main or the primary purpose of the CUP, which was to develop a PUD and build a road up through that PUD. That was the purpose of that CUP. In other words, the main reason for getting the CUP, or the nature for which the CUP was used, was supposed to be for developing a road to go to and through the PUD and extracting for other purposes was minimal in comparison. There is no evidence that the extraction efforts taking place on parcel 49 were used for the purpose of developing a road to the PUD, hence why we're here. The issue is over access. If Nixon had built that road that they were required to under their 1984 CUP, we would not be here. And there is, the nature of the use for which the CUP was granted, the county argues Nixon has not met that condition under the CUP. And in fact, for most of the time, that parcel 49 was owned by Johnson. So it's only recently that Nixon has come into ownership of that parcel and has been using it for extraction purposes. Now, the other non-compliance with county code is that one or more of the conditions of the conditional use permit have not been met. Specifically, Condition 4 of the CUP has not been met. Condition 4 indicates a private road will extend north to the PUD and thence west to Highway 91. So the commissioner who made a motion to approve the CUP indicated that if Mr. Nixon were willing to meet the above conditions, he would favor the request. He then made a motion for approval, it was seconded, and then it was unanimously approved by the planning commission. One of those conditions was for the development of a road, the road that I just talked about. However, that condition was never met, and is now over 40 years since that CUP. So the evidence shows that no road was constructed on the relevant parcels to the highway, and therefore, for that reason, the county argues that there are non-compliance with county code for that. Now, that's the 1984 CUP. We're going to go to the 2017 CUP, and the issue of non-compliance is that one or more of the conditions of the conditional use permit have not been met. Specifically, Condition 1 of the CUP has not been met. According to Condition 1, the proponent and operator, so proponent being Nixon and operators being anyone that's operating under Nixon or for Nixon, must abide by the information as provided in the application and in the CUP report. So to abide by, the legal definition to abide by is to obey or act in accordance with or in conformity to something. Within Nixon's application and the CUP report, access is identified as a private road through the county's adjacent parcel. The findings in the CUP also indicate that there was access, an access agreement in place allowing access to the excavation site. There is access, that much is clear. The problem is that the only one who had access was Johnson, through the agreement that Johnson had with the county. Nixon cannot abide by the information he provided to the county, nor the information that the county relied on, I'll admit that the county did rely on that information, in its finding, because Nixon is not the subject of the agreement permitting access across the county's property, nor does Nixon have such an agreement with the county. There's no agreement allowing access for Nixon. The agreement was never assigned to Nixon because it cannot be assigned unless consented to by the county and Johnson, and the county has not consented to such an agreement. And any access Nixon has been using over the county is without written permission or authorization to do so. So written authorization or written permission, we don't have that for Nixon at this time. Therefore, Condition 1 cannot be met because Nixon does not have legal access through the county's property to access the excavation sites. That covers the CUPs. We are aware that Nixon has made some responses, and in response, he has argued that they have a vested critical infrastructure material use. I'm probably not going to say that a lot of the times because that's a tongue twister, but basically a vested use, I'll just shorten it up. So their attorney further represented that they have a vested right in the county's road even. So we have two assertions, that there's a vested right in the properties that Nixon has, that they have this excavation right, and then they have a vested right in using the county's road for access for these purposes. So the county disagrees with both. For an entity to become vested under Utah Code, and this is 1727A1001, they must meet three requirements. First, they have to have a critical infrastructure materials operation use as defined in state code, so we have to meet that definition. They also have to be a critical infrastructure materials operator as defined in state code. So they have to meet that definition as well. And then, the use is an existing legal use. So they have to meet that. So they have to meet all three of these requirements, it's not just one or the other, it's all three. According to Utah Code, a critical infrastructure materials operation use is, and this is how the state code defines it, the extraction, excavation, processing, or reprocessing of critical infrastructure materials. Critical infrastructure materials are defined in state code as sand, gravel, and rock aggregate. So the county does not disagree that Nixon meets this definition for his parcels, we don't. However, regarding the county's road, the county does not agree that there is a critical infrastructure use on the county's road. The county's road is not an extraction of critical infrastructure materials, it is not an excavation of such materials, no such materials are being processed on that road, and no such materials are being reprocessed on that road. The extraction, excavation, processing, and reprocessing, if any, is all happening on Nixon's property. This requirement is not meant with regard to the county's road, but is likely meant with regard to Nixon's own parcel. To the second requirement, to become vested is that the use must be by a critical infrastructure materials operator. That is defined as an entity that A, owns, controls, or manages a critical infrastructure material use, and B, has produced commercial quantities of material for that use. Again, the county does not disagree that Nixon meets this definition for his parcels. However, regarding the county's road, the county does not agree that there is such a use. Nixon does not own the road, they do not control the road, and there is no material use on the road, meaning the road is not for extraction, excavation, and so forth. The county's road has not produced any commercial quantities of material, and therefore, with regards to the county's road, this requirement is not met. Not to mention, Nixon does not have any control over that road whatsoever. The third requirement is that there is, that there must be an existing legal use. This is the requirement that the county will show is not being met for Nixon's own parcels and for the county's road. For Nixon to have an existing legal use, they need a valid CUP that they are following in accordance with the law. Nixon does not have a valid legal use for extraction on his properties, nor on the county's road. In fact, the reason that we're here today is arguing that Nixon does not have a valid legal CUP at this time. Therefore, for them to be able to have that vested use, they need to have an existing legal use. If they have violated and are in violation of their CUPs, they are not, they don't have a legal use, or, excuse me, their use is not legal, there's not an existing legal use. So let me just explain this in a little bit of detail. Both Nixon's CUPs are non-compliant with county code requirements, and the evidence for this has been produced in great detail. So I've already explained how the CUPs have been violated, you all know that, I don't need to rehash that. The definition requires an existing legal use. Nixon filed a declaration, and so part of being vested, you have to file a declaration. Nixon filed a declaration required by state law on August 25th, 2025, which is about two weeks ago. That's after they were put on notice of their CUP being in danger of revocation and that they have violated county code. So they're claiming a vested use after they have been notified of this revocation hearing. They cannot claim that they are vested because they're not, they are in violation of county code, meaning they do not have a legal authorization to continue operating with that permit. Nixon also does not have an existing legal use on the county's road, Nixon does not own the road, they do not control the road, and they certainly do not have legal permission to use it. Not even Johnson, who had legal permission to access the road, would have been able to claim he was vested on the county's road. to claim he was vested on the county's road because he did not have control of the road, he had permission. Therefore, since Nixon cannot show that they have an existing legal use, they cannot claim that they are vested on their own parcels nor the county's road. Now, even if Nixon has a vested use, the county still has an argument that the vested use does not prohibit the commission from revoking the CUPs for an issue over access. Under Utah Code seventeen-twenty-seven-A-one-thousand-three, becoming vested simply means that the entity with a vested use receives additional rights to the property for that use. So we, we, we need to understand that a vested use means that you are receiving additional rights that allow you to operate, um, uh, extraction, and those rights include expanding to contiguous land that is under the ownership or control of the operator, expanding the use to new land that is contiguous land to the surface or subsurface land, use, operate, use, operate, construct, reconstruct, and so forth, buildings on any surface or subsurface land that the operator owns or controls. The operator may also increase, increase production or volume, alter methods of extraction or processing, and so forth, discontinue, suspend, terminate, deactivate, or continue to reactivate use. All of these are additional rights that are allowed when you are a vested use. However, to expand the operator, to expand, the operator must give notice to the county, um, let's see, the county legislative body, so it'd be the council. So, even, even though those rights are given, even in some of those rights, they still have to go to the county to make sure that the expanded use is gonna be for the health, sa- uh, public health, safety, and welfare. Other than the additional rights afforded to the operator, nothing in state code interferes with the county's ability to hold a vested use operator accountable for not meeting the requirements of their CUP. So, reading through that state code, yeah, they get all these additional rights if, if they are vested, have a vested use, but it doesn't prohibit the county from being able to, um, meet, or hold, excuse me, let me back up. Other than the additional rights afforded to the operator, nothing in state code interferes with the county's ability to hold a vested use operator accountable for not meeting the requirements of the CUP that do not pertain to the vested use additional rights. And that's what we have here today. We have an issue of access that has nothing to do with vested use, that has, um, i- it really has to do with whether or not they can access the property that they, they need to get to for them to continue with their CUP. It is not the county's responsibility to provide, find, or help, um, an applicant to have use or access to their, their property. I'm wrapping up here, so you should be happy. Basically, you have several issues before you today. One, did Nixon violate their nineteen-eighty-four CUP? And if they violated it, are you going to revoke it? That's gonna be a question that you'll have to answer. Did Nixon violate their two thousand seventeen CUP? If so, are you gonna revoke it? When making these, uh, decisions, the county wants to point out that the county is not obligated to enter into an agreement with Nixon. Entering into an agreement with Nixon should not be a consideration in today's meetings. I'm not saying that the county is not still considering that, that's actually above and beyond what I, I am able to do. That's gonna be with elected officials and other individuals who have the power and authority to negotiate contracts and so forth with the county. But for the purposes of today's meeting, entering into agreement is not, uh, what the planning commission is here to, to consider. It's whether or not they revoke theirs, or they violated their CP, CUP, and if you're gonna revoke it. The few, the issues of revocation boil down to, for the nineteen-eighty-four CUP, did Nixon change the nature of the use? And did Nixon fail to construct a road to the PUD and then to the highway for, for their own property, through their own property? And then for the two thousand CUP, can Nixon abide by misinform- by the misinformation, whether intentional or not, I'm not saying it was intentional, that he represented to the county when they presented that they had access to, uh, through county property? And then based on this information provided tonight, um, the, the county believes that, that there is enough information to show that there can be a violation of these, both of these CUPs. Uh, we are happy to respond to any questions that you might have at this time. I'm not sure if, uh, how you'll proceed, if you'll let Nixon respond and then give us a, a final opportunity to respond. If, if we're not gonna have a final opportunity to respond, then there are a few considerations that have been brought up by Nixon that we haven't addressed, and I wanna make sure that we have an opportunity to, uh, address those. So, I guess that would be my question, are, are we gonna be able to have an opportunity to respond to any of the, uh...
You gotta get our pay scale much higher than it is.
It's fifteen dollars and that's getting a little short here.
Just talk to Nolan.
I'm not getting paid much either. Any, any...
I don't have any questions for him yet.
Mr. Chairman?
But as far as, as far as come back to, to, uh, legal. I would be inclined to have a, to have a follow-up after, after we hear from the applicant.
Okay, great.
So should we hold our questions for him then, or should we?
Uh, we wanna, if there's some germane questions, we probably oughta take care of those right now, uh, before we hear from the applicant.
Well, we, this is okay, Mr. Chairman, if I ask. In reading the information that we had beforehand and, and then following this, there's no question that the county has some, some information here, valid information and such, but, but my concern is, why now?
That, that's a great concern. So what happened was, the county was not aware of, of this situation. They just simply did not know about the agreement, they didn't, no one who had, basically, it sounds like legal was never apprised of the situation, they never looked at that agreement to see that, hey, this agreement doesn't apply to Nixon at all. And so, the why now is, um, the, the director of Public Works brought this to our attention, we looked at it, and we said, hey, this agreement is, is not for Nixon, this is for Johnson. And as we started looking into it, we realized that there are some serious concerns. And, and as soon as we started realizing that there were ser- serious concerns, we started engaging in, uh, communication with, with Nixon, um, and, and others who have represented him, his attorneys, and, um, we've been trying to work on an agreement. So that's a very great question, but we simply, one of the things that we have to realize is the county has been growing exponentially, and, and that means that our services are growing, our capabilities are increasing. We, we're no longer in the days where, where we can get by on handshake deals and other situations that, that we now are better prepared and better able to handle. You know, back then, in two thousand seventeen, th- they had maybe one, uh, civil attorney to be able to help with all these things. We now have more attorneys that we can be able to look at and work with the different department heads and, and other individuals. There is no ill intent here. I know that there are allegations that that's the case, but I can guarantee you that there's no ill intent. It simply came because our Public Works Director pointed it out to us, we looked at it and said, yep, that's a problem, we need to work on it. And so we've been trying to work on it. We, we didn't revoke back in May, and actually back in March and April when this came, came to us. There have been a lot of efforts, a lot of history of us trying to work through it.
Just one other question in that. So I, I'm aware, I've been in construction before and I'm aware of some of the pits that the county has, and I'm aware of a pit up north, that there's some controversy on an access point there that the county could be a part of, not trying to change the subject.
Sure.
But the thing I find fascinating is that when you look on the parcel maps, the access road to that pit and cove, and this one here now, both say private. That wasn't before, when did that happen?
Um, that's not something our office did, and...
Well, hey, we gotta be respectful.
But, but, here's, here's the other theme. Um, GIS is not, that's, that's my understanding, it's been brought to my attention, I would, I'd imagine, well, we have a GIS group, and I, I think that Matt might be able to answer to that, to that maybe, I don't know. But, but the, the issue is that GIS might say that it's private, well, the, the county has created, treated that as, as a private road. You saw in the Nixon agreement that, um, that it's private, and GIS, they're constantly trying to adjust to information. So if they get better information than they had before, they're gonna go, this, and this is my explanation that I've received from the Public Works Director who works with, uh, the people in GIS, they're gonna make that update and make that change in GIS. Uh, i- it, it's hard to say that just because it changed all of a sudden, that there's ill intent. Um, that's, as far as I've seen, there's no int- ill intent on the county's part. We've just shown you the timeline and the misrepresentation that has been provided to the county, whether it's been intended or not, I'm not saying that it has. But we're, we're coming to a point where we are actually receiving information and are better able to process through that and provide this information. So, I don't know anything about the other, the other situation, I can't speak to that, and, and I don't think that's, that would be something I would have to look at. I know that the county has closed down another pit because of access issues and problems with that pit and contractual issues, so it's not like the county is just targeting, we are not targeting. We just had, um, issues, you know, we've dealt with Kronkis and other, other, you know, violations that have come to our attention. We're trying to handle the ones that come to our attention and trying to do our best to look at the legal considerations.
Other questions for legal? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Wayman Stoddard on behalf of Nixon and Nixon, I'm one of the attorneys who's been working on this from our end. I do have a statement prepared, but I'd like to jump into answering a question put forward by, uh, Councilmember Christiansen. So, to the best of our understanding, that road changed on the GIS from public to private in two thousand twenty-five, earlier this year, that was something we put forward in our letter. Um, and I can confirm that while I appreciate the representations made by county, that that road, uh, has always been treated as private, the county has applied for and received UDOT money to, to maintain that road as a public road, at least through two thousand twenty-four. So through the two thousand twenty-four application, the county has received money to, uh, maintain that road as a public road, and I, not only is that supported by direct communications from UDOT, but I believe that county representatives will admit that they have received that money. So, the idea of it having been treated as private when the county is applying for and receiving public money to defund that road is, is somewhat problematic. Um, as I mentioned, my name is Wayman Stoddard, I'm the attorney for Nixon and Nixon as it relates to, or one of the attorneys as it relates to these two parcel numbers. Um, as you know, and as we've shown you, your predecessors on the planning commission approved Nixon's application in two thousand seventeen for a conditional use permit to mine and distribute gravels to homes, developments, and commercial projects around Cache County. Sitting before you are numerous representat- representatives of Nixon, as well as their subcontractors, who, among others, represent Carstner Homes, Next Construction, Visionary Homes, Savage Construction, and even Kilgore Companies in Geneva who own their own independent gravel contracts, work with Nixon in order to deliver gravel to properties more close to the northern end of the valley. Nixon's parcel has helped in lowering traffic, reducing congestion on roads, as well as providing safer access to this mess, this mandatory material for countless parcels in northern Utah. Each of these organizations have used Nixon's parcels to provide the materials for countless Cache County residents, as well as large developments including commercial and otherwise. As fur- you are further aware, as part of the twenty-seventeen CUP, the staff was asked to evaluate whether Nixon and Nixon complied with the requirements of Cache County Code. In no fewer than three locations in the application, Cache County affirmatively stated that Nixon complied with the access requirements. There's the point where it was brought up, um, that there was a representation made in the communication, there was a latter point. Are your exhibits still here, or did you take those down?
They have them.
Okay. Um, there was a representation made by the Public Works Director that that access was there. And then finally, one of the conditions on the two thousand seventeen CUP was that Nixon improved the public access road for about five hundred feet past the termination of the public road. Nixon did do that improvement on that public road, so there is not a question here that the county knew about the access. The question, and I guess what's being put forward is, well, even though we investigated it, and even though we can, affirmatively stated that there was access, and, and not just relying on a representation, we made independent findings that there were access and required you to work on improving that access, we didn't find that you had access. That shouldn't be on us. And, and frankly, members of the commission, that's, that's not applicable. The idea that the county can affirmatively state that access exists, grant a CUP for it, and come back nine years later and say, well, we goofed. There wasn't actually access, and because of that, we're gonna revoke your CUP and we're gonna deprive countless families throughout northern Cache Valley of the material we The specific quotes are, that Nixon had, quote, "access to the site from Smithfield Pit Road, a county road at sixty-eight-hundred north off of SR ninety-one." The Public Works Inspector specifically stated that, quote, "a county road, Smithfield Pit Road, extends east of Highway eighty-nine. At the end of the pavement, also the approximate end of the county road, a private access road extends to the Nixon property." There is an access agreement in place with Cache County across the county property for access to the excavation area. The requirement from the planning commission was, quote, "A five-hundred-foot section immediately following the end of the pavement is a twenty-five-foot wide gravel roadway. This section of the access is failing, and repair of the subbase and regard, uh, regrating is necessary." Those were com- composed into a condition number nine, which required that prior to recording, the five-hundred-foot section immediately following the end of the pavement that is failing must be repaired by the proponent, by Nixon. Those repairs were completed as required, and Nixon has been safely serving the residents of Cache County in an environmentally friendly, economically competitive way ever since. However, and I think as echoed by the commission, for reasons unknown to Nixon, in May of this year, suddenly we had revocations and notices that we would be having a gate put across that property and we'd be locked out of our, our operation. Um, first, it was allegedly because of indemnification. Nixon immediately circulated and offered agreement where we agreed to indemnify Cache County for any injury that occurs along that parcel or any other impact along that parcel as it relates to Nixon. Cache County reached out to the counties, uh, sorry, Nixon reached out to the county insurer and asked if that road created any kind of insurance risk or liability problem for the county and was told no. Next, there was an issue regarding compensation. Nixon is prepared to compensate the county for its use of that road. Then, county, the county indicated that there were issues with where the road was located because it wanted to access the gravel on its property, and Nixon offered to relocate the easement in order to mine, in order to minimize the impacts to the county from the existence of that road. So Nixon has spared ever, no expense in trying to negotiate this resolution. And frankly, the reason for that is because any other access is impossible. Nixon's has reached out to UDOT about trying to get access off of Highway eighty-nine to the parcel, and UDOT has told us that because Highway eighty-nine is a limited access highway, it will not grant any addition, any alternative access for Nixon off the parcel. The exact reasons why is reported by UDOT were that there's already a perfectly sufficient access along Smithfield Canyon Road. So we can't get access to our parcel because the access that we've been given by the county for the last, across the two CUPs, thirty years, forty years, precludes us from getting access to the road directly through UDOT. As is clear in the two thousand seventeen CUP, Cache County affirmed independently that Nixon has access across the county parcel. While the county asserts that it's unable to locate any agreement, the two thousand seventeen CUP is the agreement in question. Nixon has used, exclusively used, improved, and maintained that road since the two thousand seventeen CUP in reliance on that finding. The county made a lot, made, made substantial note of a nineteen-ninety-seven agreement, which it reports governs any access across this parcel. The transferability language of that agreement states specifically that it's not transferable except by written consent of the parties. The Legrand-Johnson agreement specifically said that Nixon was to have any access that Legrand-Johnson had, and that's the writing that, under that interpretation, assuming the county's interpretation is valid, which we disagree that it is, but assuming that it were, that constitutes a writing on behalf of Legrand-Johnson. And I don't know what the two thousand seventeen CUP constitutes if not a writing on behalf of the county. The county independently determined that there was access. It affirmatively stated it in three separate places. It's impossible for me to tell now how that does not constitute a writing that transfers the interest from Legrand. Moving to the vested parcel issue. As a preliminary matter, this vesting statute is rel- relatively new. It was enacted as part of House Bill three-five-five, which was enacted earlier this year. And frankly, it, it attempts to address some of these issues relating to going back and finding issues with CUPs or, or vesting requirements and, and revocations that result from that. Um, the county does not contest anything about Nixon's use of his parcels, except for the fact that they contest that he doesn't have a legal right to use the parcels, except we're here today for a CUP revocation hearing. There's no automatic removal of a CUP that results from a failure to comply, even if a failure to comply occurred. Nixon has had access and has used that access safely and successfully for the past forty years. So to say that there has been no legal use under a CUP, that the county now has a process and procedure for revoking, uh, just doesn't hold water, frankly. If we have to go through a process of revoking the CUP, a process that, and I'll emphasize this again later, but is discretionary on this commission as to whether or not to revoke the CUP, prior to its revocation, it can be nothing but a legal conforming use. So as it relates to the parcel, the county has conceded, in essence, that it is a vested use. use. As to the roadway, there is no question that Nixon has used the road. There is no question that Nixon has repaired the road. There is no question that the county recognized that Nixon had access to the road. And frankly, that road currently only services Nixon's parcel. So it, it's difficult to say how it's not something that Nixon used and controlled for the period of issue in this. The important language from House Bill 355 is, notwithstanding a political subdivision's prohibition, restriction, or limitation on a critical infrastructure material use, adopted after the establishment of the critical infrastructure material use, the rights of a critical infrastructure material use operator with a vested critical infrastructure materials use include the right to use, operate, construct, reconstruct, restore, extend, expand, maintain, repair, alter, substitute, modernize, upgrade, and replace equipment, processes, facilities, and buildings on any subsurface or surface land that the critical use, uh, infrastructure material user owns or controls before May 7th, 2025. This commission could, in theory, determine today that it wishes to revoke the CUP governing the Nixon parcel. In the event that the commission chooses to do so, under House Bill 355, the only thing that would occur is that Cache County would lose the ability to work with Nixon as it relates to certain restrictions. Nixon would maintain, under his vesting rights, the right to use, to operate, to expand his operations, to extract material, and everything else. Notably, that could be better for Nixon. It could be better for Nixon if we asked you today to revoke the CUP. But frankly, that's not how Nixon operates. Nixon has operated in compliance with the rules of Cache County since its operations began, when it was part of the 1984 CUP, and we want to continue doing so. We want to negotiate a resolution to this roadway issue. We want to fix the access issue. We proposed, and, and apparently there's been some communication issues, whether it's from our end or the other end, but I'll tell you now affirmatively, that Nixon is open to potential relocation of the easement to somewhere else on the county property. It's open to, uh, compensation as it relates to the use of that property. It's open to continuing to maintain, repair, and, and perform all required maintenance and improvements on that, on that road, and it's open to an indemnification agreement. Frankly, we think we already have one. But that's how we want to operate. We want to operate in compliance with the CUP. We want to operate under the conditions relegated by the CUP. We want to operate with the reclamation plan that's in place by the CUP. Let us. One, we have access. We have access under the 2017 CUP. We have access under the 20, uh, the 1984 CUP. We have access under the independent agreement. Two, we have access under the agreement with LaGrand Johnson, because Cache County, in a writing, affirmed that that agreement existed. Three, we have access as a vested use owner. And four, even if we don't have access, we're trying to get it. We don't have to, under the vested use operator, but we want to, because that's what Nixon and Nixon is and has been. As I conclude my remarks, I'd like to reemphasize what is at stake here. Because of an error, as put by Cache County, we stand to shut down a business that generates $100,000 in monthly revenue and will generate that revenue for the next 35 years, according to our geologists. We plan to shut down a pit that employs not less than 40 people and has provided homes to countless residents of Cache County. We seek to shut down a pit that is uniquely situated in that it directly accesses a major collector in Highway 89. The comment was made about the Cronquist parcel. Fortunately or unfortunately, I was one of the attorneys who worked on the Cronquist parcel issue. And one of the issues that was raised by this commission was the fear of having to have gravel and other particulate travel through countless rural subdivisions across unimproved roads in order to get to a major collector. This is one of the few pits in the county that doesn't have that problem. Nixon provides materials to most of the home builders in Cache County. Nixon contracts with larger gravel providers who have their own pits in order to save them trips that do potentially impact local communities, that do impact these substandard roads that have been so much of an issue in Cache County, in order to minimize risks to the community as well as the impacts. There are no violations that have occurred as it relates to safety or environmental issues. No injuries have occurred on this road. There's been no liability issues that have manifested. Nixon has operated this pit directly under the 2017 CUP for almost a decade, and it can, deserves the opportunity to continue to do so. And on that, I would open myself to any questions.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, you need to vote to extend the meeting.
I'll make a motion to extend to 9:30.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman, oh, I'd second that while we're on it.
Okay. We, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I didn't want to add to or detract from your presentation, but for the record, that's 91. 89 goes over Logan.
Oh, I apologize.
Well, just, we all know where you're talking.
Okay, questions for?
My question is, whatever happened to the PUD project?
So the PUD project, and I would, I would defer, I mean, I'm not as involved in that. Go, go ahead, sorry.
You need to come up to the... Please state your name.
My name is Alex Berenson, and I'm with Nixon and Nixon. I'm glad you asked that. So one of their arguments was that the PUD, or that, that whole CUP in 1984 was based on the PUD, and he only read a portion of it, which is misleading, man. It was a good argument. So if you really read that, that PUD, or that CUP, the 1984 one, yeah, there was a road being built as part of, part of that, but it also said for other developments. And it said, on the heading of the CUP, it says, "for, for material extraction." It is a request for a CUP for material extraction on the 1984 CUP. So you can look that up, and I don't have my presentation here, but I know it's there. I know those documents. So the PUD that was supposed to be built was never built, and my understanding was Smithfield City could not connect water there, and they couldn't get utilities to make the PUD happen. And so, yeah, the PUD did not happen. And the other comment on the turn lane, that was for the PUD if it was built. And so, yeah, he, he had a great argument, but he's just misleading it a little.
I apologize. I just wanted to defer to the expert on that.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Members of the commission, you are unfortunately a deliberative body, but you're too often called...
State your name, please.
Pardon?
State your name, please.
I'm sorry. My name is Brad Berenson. I represent Mr. Nixon. Okay? You're, as I said, you're a deliberative body, but you're too often called upon to decide technical legal questions, and I, I think that's somewhat unfair. If I could help you in your decision here, this is critical to Nixon, because if this road goes down, there's no other access to this pit. So that's the significance of it. In terms of the easement or the access that Nixon has to this pit, that can be granted in a myriad of ways. And we contend that it was really, if it didn't exist before, it was granted in the 197, or excuse me, the 2017 CUP. Any discussion on this topic about the 84 CUP is a smokescreen. It's just irrelevant. In the 19, in the 2017 CUP, the application very clearly just said, "We access this pit through this county road." That's it. And the approval said, "Yeah, you'll access it through this county road." It's just that simple. For, for you to believe the county's argument on its reason to shut this down, well, we don't have legal access, we contend that CUP, the granted CUP was our legal access. The county would have you believe, on the other hand, that the county council at that time and all the staff that reviewed and then approved the 80, the 2017 CUP, were just ignorant as to the county's rights and the prior use of this road, that they just didn't get it. That's not the case. I think the CUP provided access to this, if Nixon didn't have it otherwise. Okay? And your question as to, Ms. Christensen, as to why now, is right on point. Why now? Has the county continued to be blind to the use and relative rights of this u, this road? Do they get to do that? Do they get to allow Mr. Nixon to invest millions of dollars up there? There's millions of dollars of equipment sitting up there now, and then just say, "Oh, maybe not. We changed our mind." No, they don't. And the Utah Supreme Court's very clear on that. A subsequent county council can't amend, you're not the county council, I understand, they can't amend or revoke a previously granted CUP. They're stuck with it. And I think they're stuck with it now, even though I think there's some personal consideration by one of the council members, that they just don't like all the traffic out on this road. This is a significant pit. And with Temple coming in, there are subdivisions coming in all over. We can truck that material for 20, 30 miles to get there, or we can use this pit. Not that it will be used exclusively, but I'm just saying, the whole point of 335, which was pushed by Representative Snyder for the state, was to encourage and promote the use of pits, because there is a shortage. So I encourage you to further that use and not swallow this suggestion that, gee, the county gets to be negligent in its consideration in granting the 2017 CUP when it shouldn't have, and then let Mr. Nixon run on and, and do his thing after he spent considerable investment in it. And it gets to be further negligent by just ignoring it until now. The first thing that was dropped on Jack Nixon's desk in May was a letter saying, "Oh, gee, liability, um, indemnification," over Mr. Zook's signature. We call him Mr. Zook. He didn't sign it. He didn't know it had been signed or had borne his signature. Somebody used his stamp. The county should not get to use these kind of tactics in shutting down an otherwise lawful business enterprise. Thank you.
I just want to point out that there's been a lot of allegations that aren't, aren't supported by evidence, and they're, what we have here is, is the issue that we presented. The county has presented plenty of evidence to show why we believe we're coming from where we're coming from. We've shown deeds that show that Nixon never owned that property until 2022. We've shown that there's an agreement from 1993, showing that the county has always considered that an agreement is necessary for access through their property. One thing that's very concerning to me and to the county, a CUP cannot give away another's right to their property, to use of that property. There are legal documents that are permitted under law. We have deeds, we have contracts, and we have various other forms under the law that can give away a, a use of property. That 2017 CUP is not one of those documents. There's never been, that I am aware of, a CUP in the history of the state of Utah that has said, "Okay, applicant, you now have access to an adjacent property owner's road." And, and while there may be things that the county needs to, to work on and improve in its, its processes, they never, the county never, in all of that documentation, said that that access is Nixon's. And in fact, Nixon has not taken the responsibility for presenting those document, I showed you that those documents were provided to the county, representing that they were the ones who had that access. And that just simply was not the case. It's not fair for the county to take all the, the, the brunt of that when it was actually Nixon that presented that material to the county, as if they had that access. But it's clear that they didn't have that access, that, that the agreement was with Johnson. They didn't even own the property in 2017. And from that 2008 agreement, what was happening was that Johnson was moving up into Nixon's property and doing work for, or operating on that, that northern property. And so if you can, can look into that agreement and say, well, in 2008, they were operating without a, without a CUP on that northern parcel. They were acting outside of the law. They were acting outside of being permitted. So in 2017, the county allowed them, about eight years, nine years after that, to get a CUP and to allow them to continue to do that. The county is not coming from a position where we just want to close Nixon down. That is not where we're coming from. What we want is Nixon to be compliant with the law and compliant with the processes that are, have already been established. And that's where the county's coming from. We, we don't have, Mr. Stoddard said that they don't have access in, in writing, that the county, basically that the county see, having the CUP and the county being involved in that is, is a writing. The county cannot enter into an agreement without a signature of the county executive. That is under county code. That's under, it's also supported by state code. You cannot, a, a, a person from planning and development, or development services, or public works, cannot enter into an agreement for the county. Nixon knows that. He, he's been in real estate, I mean, as you can tell, since at least 1984. He, he would have known that that does not convey an interest. That is something that has been conjured up, it sounds like, since we've been dealing with this, because he too realized, just as the county, hey, this isn't right. We need to get this right. And so what we're saying today is, yeah, there's been missteps on both sides. What the county wants to do is get to right. We've presented several options with, with Nixon on what we can do with an agreement. Some of the things that we have to do are, were not considered in the, in the Johnson agreement. Some of that is indemnification. We also have to have adequate consideration under common law. We have to have certain requirements met. UDOT is now going to require us, if we increase the use on that road, UDOT's now going to increase some, increase some standards. We have to go through a permitting process, and that's going to be on the county to, to have to pay for that, or to get that payment through Nixon. We've also wanted to make sure that our, our agreement is not a longstanding agreement, and that we can work to get that agreement accomplished in a, in a period of time. These are all things that the county has been working with Nixon on, but Nixon has not come to the table fully to, to have those agreements. We want to have those things in, in fact, I was having a conversation with Mr. Stoddard before this, and he understands and recognizes that we, I have not received a lot of the information that he, he even presented. If we decide today that the CUP gives a legal right to Nixon to use the property, we're going to be in, in major trouble, because that is unprecedented. There is not a way to convey property. You cannot convey another's person's property on a CUP for a different person's request. That being said, we're happy to answer any further questions that you might have, if you have any. I do want to address one final thing. They, Mr. Stoddard did bring up the fact that the county has classified that 6800 North in records with UDOT as a Class C or B road. That is accurate. The, the, the thing that's, that wasn't mentioned is that it's only that paved portion of the road. So we still have all of that gravel access, that even if that were to be considered public, which the county would argue it's not, and the county is working to fix that, and they're working with UDOT to get that, that remedied, there, we're not getting a lot of money from what I've been told by our Public Works Director for that small portion of that hard road. And it was never meant, we never meant to deceive UDOT. It was some misunderstandings, and, and I've talked with Matt Phil... It was some misunderstandings and, and I've talked with Matt Phillips and we're going to work on getting that remedied. The problem is that even if that were to be considered public, it's only that, that hard road. It's not the rest of the road. So that still doesn't apply to any of this. So there are things that the county is trying to, to fix, that the county is trying to do as it grows. We're not saying that the county's perfect, but we do, as we strive to, to come into compliance, we're also asking those that, that have CUPs to come into compliance. And that's all I have for, for you.
Any questions?
Do you, so I could have, I could have asked the other attorneys this, but does the two thousand seventeen CUP replace the twenty, the nineteen eighty-four CUP?
That's a great question. So there's a lot of information. No, it's, it's actually for a different, different parcels. So the two thousand seventeen CUP covers, so if you look on, on here, you have, I'm going to just say the last two digits. So parcel forty-nine is the nineteen eighty-four CUP. The two thousand seventeen CUP is the parcel above, parcel ten, and portions of parcel three. So what was happening is basically Johnson was going up into parcel ten. The county said, hey, you need a CUP for that. And, and they got a CUP in two thousand seventeen to continue those operations. And, and to understand that Johnson was the one still, as far as the county understands, that was, was doing a lot of these operations. He didn't sell that property title or parcel forty-nine until two thousand twenty-two, which is five years after the CUP was granted.
And if we were to revoke the CUPs, landowners could simply turn around tomorrow and apply for a new CUP. Is that correct?
Correct.
And the conditions would be defined at that point?
Correct.
That they would need to meet, right?
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, lots to consider.
A whole lot. Want me to go first?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think if they were out of compliance with the nineteen eighty-four CUP, we should have brought it up earlier than forty years. So I, I don't see that not being used for a development right on site. We've known they've been hauling gravel out of there for forty years. We approved another CUP right next to it, which stated they were going to use it for other stuff. That, that wasn't for development at that point, right? That, they've been hauling it out for that. We've known they've been using the county right of way, whether it's a county road or a private road. They're going across county property for forty-one years. We didn't have a problem with it for forty-one years. And now we want to take that away from them when we're doing just the opposite to private landowners with roads across their private ground to public ground. And we're going to them and saying, people have used that road for fifty years. You have to continue to allow them across your private property to access public property. We're doing the opposite here. To me, and I, I don't think that's right, if that's really their only way to access this pit and we want to take it away because we can't come up with a new agreement, I think we need to sit down at the table again and come up with a new agreement if that two thousand seventeen doesn't. And I, I can see both sides of that. Maybe the two thousand seventeen doesn't grant that because let's just update that agreement that was there with Nixon instead of Johnson and continue to operate the pit. Maybe there's some conditions that need to be added with, with some other minor improvements. I don't think the UDOT one is valid because the increased traffic has been there for eight years and UDOT hasn't said, you need to change the access with a new agreement there. If it were a new, new CUP, the new access with UDOT would certainly, I think, come into play. So without getting too upset at the county's negligence, maybe for the last four decades, that's where I'm going to stop. Because I'm guessing some of you were here
Three of us were.
The two thousand seventeen CUP was approved.
Three of us.
Yeah, right. You guys approved it. I mean, it's not like we didn't, you didn't know what you were doing eight years ago. You're still the same people. You're still smart, right? I, I don't get that part of it. I'm done for a minute.
This, this is my first meeting. On this commission.
You picked a good one.
And I picked a great one.
You can still.
Sitting here as a citizen who is now on this, sitting in this position, I'm asked to be judge and jury in a situation that should have been solved long ago. So get in the room and solve it. I'm serious. You've wasted
All summer.
All these people and all summer playing around with this. And I hope you guys got paid well. But I'm tired of sitting here and listening to this. I really am. So get in the room and solve it. It's all about money, isn't it? It's all about money. So where we can meet, you can make some money, both sides come out of it. Give us a CUP next time we meet, we'll raise our hands and the problem will be solved. But let's not keep playing games. So I say let's stay with this dang thing and go home.
We still got.
If you want to hear me next time, if we have to go through this again. And I'm only the first time.
Started off good. Amen.
Yeah, I, I don't see any need to revoke the CUP. I think, I think there's a solution that can be worked out with a new agreement.
So what are our options for tonight? Can we, can we hold it over their head for a, for a month? For the ninety days if they work it out?
I would think so. I mean, that's, that's what I would, you know, that's, I guess, that's what, the way I was leaning, you know, to avoid having to revoke it and have them turn around and come in and apply for it again and that sort of thing. And see if they couldn't work it out. That's, that's what I was thinking.
My concern is here, I know folks from both sides and I respect both sides. Obviously, we're here on behalf of the county. But at the time that I've been on this commission, I can think of maybe three CUP revocations. There was the airport, Holyoke Airport in Mandan. There was the Hellaskeenville in, in Paradise. And in all of them scenarios, if I didn't leave one out, we was on it. Things happened, things didn't line up, we were on it and it moved ahead. I, I have. There, there's obviously real estate issues here. But, but I just felt we're being brought in as the scapegoat. And I'm not saying that ignorantly, but we, we've heard valid evidence from both parties tonight, but we don't even have enough total, as both parties presented, some had some, some had some of the other. We don't even have enough to go off of, so I just want to move on and not revoke the CUP. Hopefully, they can come to a consensus and we can learn a big lesson moving ahead. Because if it was me, as I presented here tonight, if, if, if I allowed something to happen on my property and I didn't acknowledge it at the time, I should have the same one year on my CUP to bring it up or quicker. How can you bring it up after this much time?
But just because you break the law for forty years doesn't make it okay.
I don't know that it was.
I don't know it was breaking, maybe that you.
There was maybe a misunderstanding.
Misunderstanding for forty years.
Or, or maybe not in the forty, because the original one was good for the, the access for the, for the Johnsons. That was there. It was just the misunderstanding of what was construed in that two thousand seventeen.
Yeah, if you have misunderstanding.
So yeah, but I think, to me, it seems like there should be an easy remedy for that. We just update that agreement for access. To just shut it off just seems silly to me.
You thought it was intentional?
I don't, I mean, I.
No, I was just saying, I mean, you make a mistake. There was some mistakes made.
Let's fix them.
I, I will say, you know, one of the most frustrating situations to be put in as a commissioner is when you're dealing with a landowner who won't comply with the conditions that, you know, we've all put in front of them. And I'm, I'm not saying that that's what's happening here or whatever, but that's why these situations are so important to get right. And I, I've, over the years, I've been here for a while. We tend to let people get away with stuff. And again, I'm not speaking specific to this one, but I think that's why we do need to have, you know, enough courage that when there is something amiss, that we call it out and, and make sure that gets rectified.
Well, as, if you look up here on the map, if you look under, on that two thousand seventeen permit on item number six on the request, under item AI, active areas of material extr- extraction will occur on no more than ten acres of property at any one time in an east-west line moving nor, to the north. As extraction in an area is completed, the operation area will shift and the excreted area will be reclaimed. Well, I can look at that and I can see that on a forty-five acre parcel, it looks like pretty good chunk of it, and that's not following that recommendation. And actually, that would, not even a recommendation, that was a request. So we, we have, we still have some non-compliance from two thousand seventeen.
I'd make a recommendation to, to.
Motion.
Motion to not revoke the CUP at this time and give the county and the applicant some more time to work out a amicable solution.
So would that be like a continue, to continue this item?
Well, if they figure something out, it never has to come back to us, right? There's no revocation needed. They don't have to come back if they can figure something out. It's not like we're approving condition, at, at least to my understanding. If they can work something out, there's no need to come back. You can, I guess we can.
Yeah, I, I'm.
I don't know how you do it. We don't, we haven't done many of these.
Right, exactly. That's, I'm, I'm sort of.
That's what options were. Look, county code says a condition used permit may be revoked by the authorities. So you, if the commission finds that one or more of the following conditions exist, list those out, right? So it, so it's a main, it's a discretionary, so you have the option to revoke it.
If, if, but then you have to specifically find what the conditions ought to be, for there to be right, right? Or are you going to say, we're not going to revoke it, what can be done? Or I guess if there's another potential option, I can take it out for thirty, sixty, ninety days or whatever.
If that makes sense, I'll kind of clarify what options you have.
What do you feel like with his point about, you know, if, if there were an agreement, does it have to come back?
Say it again, what was the question? Sorry?
Commissioner Dogg said, you know, if, if, if the county and Nixon, Nixon came to an agreement on use of the road to access the pro- property, would this need to come back to the commission?
I would say no.
For their decision. Okay.
We have a motion on the, on the floor. Do we have a second for that motion?
The motion is to to not revoke it at this time and let them work something out.
Continue it then.
But two separate things, right? So there, so there would be denying the revocation and then continuance would, would keep the, the revocation on the table.
They would have to come back if we left it on the table. If we, if we don't leave that on the table, they don't have to come back.
Right? Now, if there's other commission comes out. Whatever happens happens, right? For the consequences. So it's either approve or revoke statewide, deny it, or continue it.
So my recommendation is to deny the revocation.
Motion to deny the revocation.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion on the, on the motion?
Can I ask then, so i- if we were to deny it, that doesn't prevent counsel from bringing it back? Saying you're out of compliance, you're still.
Just like if we made them come back for another CUP, they could, the council could send it back for another revocation review, I guess.
And I, I don't mean county council, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Attorney council.
So.
We'll let this happen.
Just in case it should revoke us.
To the.
So Mr. Chairman?
Because. Oh, to put us in the position.
Prop- proposal, then we wouldn't even get a report on it, what happens.
Tell us what happened, but we can request a report.
But if no agreement.
Counsel, was there any? Nothing, okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Have we said?
I did.
Have we satisfied all, all the questions on the motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Any opposed?
Abstaining.
Attention?
There's got to be pressure on somebody to solve something.
Okay.
Yeah, all do it. No, just so.
Did you get?
I was a no as well, yes.
Two no's, three yeses and an abstain.
All right, so. So it didn't, it didn't, it didn't pass. So it didn't pass.
So it will not.
Which also means nothing happens, so it doesn't get revoked.
So, so I didn't think, I didn't think this was ethical either.
The motion, the motion does not carry, and so, and so we have a, a separate motion. Would somebody?
Well, I didn't think this was ethical, but it was done before. So is there any modifications that you two would take to come our way or modifications to get us to go your way?
For, for me, I would just, I, I was more of a position, I'd like to advocate that the parties get together and come to an agreement. This goes away.
You believe continuing.
Continuing was what I was more supportive of. Yes, correct.
So are you willing to make that mo- make that motion?
What does Mr. Rigby?
I, I guess that was my reasoning is that I'd just like to see some kind of reconciliation or not even reconciliation, just to solve the problem. Let's, if, if, I'm afraid if we just look at it, then maybe we feel like we're off the hook and don't have to look, get the problem solved.
And that honestly wasn't my intent in.
No.
In, in, in it, I just felt because of the timeframe and whatever, that's hundred percent. But I would consider what you guys are saying if, if you would.
I, I, then therefore I would, I would make a motion that we continue the item for up to ninety days to see if the two parties can come together on an agreement. That would make this go away.
All right, I'll, I'll second that one for you. It still gets us in the most the same direction.
Do we have a motion?
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion, a second, discussion on the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all right, that will be continued for up to ninety days. And we would encourage, encourage the parties to, to work this out. All right, we have eleven minutes left. For three items.
Feel really bad for these good ladies.
And I know Powder Mountain's been here waiting a long, long time, so you're, you're up now. Discussion on Powder Mountain. And folks, I'd ask you if you
I don't know.
Are leaving or you're not, not concerned about this proposal? We'd ask you just to step outside, take the conversations out there so we can have our discussion.
I'm going to go grab my power.
I mean, that's a real estate.
Look at the excavation part, it's just that little circle.
Something to look at, show that we're square going forward.
Big, big, big bodies.
That's their top.
It's got something to do with his resignation.
I don't think the-
Negotiated in the gutter.
Yeah. You know, what's, what's cash county?
And the county was a party to it. How could they do that?
I thought their pit was-
That's mine.
It's getting bigger than me. Yeah.
Okay.
Take away his only access to property.
We don't get extra minutes because of technology. Connor or Angie, do you want to give us a, an overview?
All right, I was actually just going to do 30 seconds and update you on number 11, just to get that out of the way while they get this going. So the general plan water use element, as you remember from our last meeting, was presented by our consultant. They've since made a few minor changes based on the conversation, including taking out that crop type map that was in there and causing some confusion. But anyway, their final draft and layout is in your packet if you wanted to give it a final look through. And let me know by September 17th if you have any additional corrections or additions. We'll have it as a public hearing for, in the next meeting.
What numbers that would fall under?
Eleven. It's number, yeah, 11.
General plan water use.
But yeah, so it's just the brief update I wanted to give. It's in a folder. Three documents. So if you look in-
I pulled your folders up, but I'm still, I don't think I found it.
Okay, there, the folders are usually up at the top with the staff reports and that below it.
You have to refresh.
But yeah, it is in there. If you have a problem with it, just let me know and I can resend it to you, Brady. But yeah, if we could just, and I'll send out a reminder email of any final comments by September 17th, just so we get that ready for the hearing next month.
Okay. Thank you. Hey. Okay, never mind, I'll, I'll try and find it back.
We're ready.
All right, good evening, commissioners. I appreciate the, your time. We'll try and make this as brief as possible. I'm Brian Carver with, with J U B Engineers here in Logan. The Development Services Office retained me a couple of months ago to assist in reviewing the master plan application for the Cache County side of Powder Mountain development. And so I'm, I'm just here to kind of present some, a summary of findings and kind of initiate the discussion on elements of the master plan itself, present them for your consideration and kind of move, you know, try and get to a formal review and approval hopefully in the next month or so. Let's see, so what I have, what you should have in your packets is an attachment A, which is essentially a summary of the requirements of the plan. This is taken directly from county code, title 17, chapter 14, which is the resort recreation development code.
There we go.
We, uh, yeah, yeah, sure.
Requirement summary. There you go.
Okay, well, so I, I guess essentially the, the gist of it is, you know, we've found that the application is substantially complete. The documents are in order and, and meet all of the requirements of the county statute in terms of elements that need to be incorporated into the plan. The, if you, if we can, I don't know, can I scroll down?
Oh, I got it.
Or no, okay. Different page, okay. So, Development Services staff can provide you with a PDF of this particular document, which each of these elements is hyperlinked to the section of the plan document that's relevant for your review. But as I said, all of the illustrations are, you know, meet the requirements of the code. We do have comments from affected entities, which are also required, and each of those comments and response, those correspondences are documented in this list.
Is there a number of affected entities that it's called out?
I believe it's, uh, 12, although we're counting individual responses from Cache County Fire and Weber County Fire, so we've got 13. Plus we have a, a general letter of support from the Weber County Council, which was not required by statute, but they provided one anyway, so.
Thank you.
Yep. And, and in terms of those responses, you know, the majority of them are, are complete and supportive. We're waiting for some final written comment from the county roads director. And I guess if, if we just run down the list, you know, county roads superintendent, yes, yes, or Mr. Gunn.
Something from county roads department.
It's, it's part of the statute. It, it would apply to any resort development within the county. This one is a little odd because-
And we're not supplying a road to it.
We're not supplying the roads to them. So that's, we're, we're looking at ways that we can get a, an interlocal agreement in place with Weber County, because it's likely that they would be the ones servicing those roads.
Okay.
Similarly, with EMT, fire and law enforcement, all of those are required statements. The, the Cache County Sheriff's Office has submitted a draft interlocal agreement language to the county attorney. We're waiting for their response on getting that ready to present to this body and to the county council for review. But those, the, the existing law enforcement interlocal agreement is over 15 years old and so the sheriff's department has some concerns that that needs to be updated before, before they would approve moving forward with this application.
We'd almost say that if our county search and rescue and whatever is responsible for robbery or investigating or anything else, that we'd have to have a county road that supplies our departments to get there, if that makes sense.
It does, it does make sense. And from what I understand, the county has no plans to extend a road into that property. So working with Weber County and making sure that the, the agreements in place are, are current and, and sufficient is, is one of the recommendations that, that we have for staff and for the county to move forward with this.
Okay.
The health department likewise is not servicing this property. It will be serviced by the Powder Mountain Sewer Water Improvement District. They will provide water and sewer to the entirety of the project area. They have an existing master development agreement. They have the all necessary water rights to support the projected growth and, and so they have their will serve letters provided by them addressing these issues, so.
Brian, what, what's DEQ's role in this?
Sorry?
DEQ?
DEQ. I, I assume that the Department of Environmental Qualities comments were intended to be solicited to provide input on water, you know, culinary water and wastewater management. It was determined back in August of 2024 by staff that their comments were not necessary as they're all addressed by the Service Improvement District.
Thank you.
So, so there's, there's just a memo under that link explaining as much.
Over the, the general permit.
There was a traffic impact study conducted as part of this master plan, as part of the, the environmental summary requirements. And the Department of Transportation had some comments on concerns of the scope of the summary. They were concerned that it focused primarily on traffic congestion at some major intersections down the state highway from the, the site, but did not address issues like steep slopes and, and capacity of, of State Road 158, which is the route that services, that provides public access to the site. They have been in communication with the applicant on addressing those concerns and we're just waiting back for some final feedback on that. As a, as a remedy to that, you know, we are recommending to staff that as a condition of approval, some sort of, um, threshold for development or density be set after, at which point, if the development reaches that threshold, that a, an additional traffic study be conducted to look at issues like road safety and, and secondary egress in, in terms of emergency. Yes, council member?
So part of that road study, because I've been on that road and it's steep and it's in the winter, so wouldn't there be recommendation for guardrails or anything else like that because of steepness of drop off of the road in that area too?
That was one of you dots concern, the existing study does not address that.
It doesn't address it?
No.
Mr. Chair, you need to vote to extend the meeting.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
If none of us make one, we have to quit.
Yeah. How much time's it gonna take us to finish it up?
I, I mean, I mean-
I imagine that we're gonna cut it in half, whatever you say.
Absolutely, absolutely. I, I think, I think you've addressed all the major comments that we had regarding the, the affected entity comments and, and the content of the plan that we kind of intended to discuss tonight. We would like to look towards a future meeting to get together to discuss about the, the environmental summary contents more in detail and then start working on, on recommended conditions for approval.
Okay, if that's what you've got?
Yep.
All right. I would assume the folks from Powder Mountain probably want to have a minute, two minutes?
One more agenda until it-
And are we, is that something we take action on item 12?
Or just you up there?
The discussion.
We, we want to discuss something you guys are free and your heads are clear and-
Oh, man. That was my question, would it be better to discuss that on the next agenda?
Yeah, Andrew, I would-
So I would, I would just say that with the partner agreement, there are various individuals in the county who would like to see that moved forward and in order for it to move forward, it has to be brought up for, have a public hearing in this commission and one in the council, right? So if it's delayed again and again, which has been, just kicking that down when, when there's been, so we can have a real quick discussion.
I think so.
Do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, we go no later than 10 o'clock, because there will not be any extensions after that.
Mr. Chairman, do you mind if I just make a comment here?
So let's take care of the motion first.
Oh, first, yes.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
A motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I, I just was gonna mention that we're very, very appreciative to you guys. This was kind of an overwhelming task for me personally to think that we're trying to help the county be in their best position. So the smartness of the county bringing in skill and working with you guys just makes me feel a whole lot better.
Quick question. Are there any dangers that you see the county could be open to sharing a, a property line with an entity?
Where, where the county is, and I, I guess the short answer is no, but I believe the county needs to have a solid agreement in place with Weber County to make sure that there's a good communication structure and coordination on, on activities as developments are approved in this county and then served by a different entity. We just need to make sure that there's a, that the interlocal agreement is sound and comprehensive and, and that, and that, that that line of communication is open, so, yeah.
All right.
Okay, thanks.
All right.
Thanks. Brocante's Powder Mountain, thank you so much for staying and so I will keep it very brief. We've got a slide on the screen. A few weeks ago, we met with Brian and Angie and some additional staff to look at how now, the music to my ears when, and to my eyes when I saw the report come back, that the work that we had done, that we felt really proud of and thought was very thorough, in fact, met the standard. And so that's the materials that I believe you received tonight. I didn't see the staff report, but that's what I just heard Brian say. And so unlike other things I heard tonight, what we would like to do is to make sure that we're meeting with staff and possibly legal counsel in crafting those conditions in a way that protects the county and is very clear in the future. So you're not 10 years later wondering what, we'll, we'll leave that. With addresses, the, what you're getting from the developer and from the project and how you're, and what we're getting as well. And so the intent is that those are really carefully crafted conditions and that's what you would actually be seeing at your upcoming meetings. I did put on the schedule because it was asked by the council to have a joint workshop and I think that Angie is still trying to, maybe she, I don't want to speak for her, to schedule that as an upcoming meeting where some additional information, basically what Brian just gave, would be presented. Happy to show additional slides or whatever that go into the detail of that thousand pages, but I think in essence, you know, knowing that it, it meets your very in-depth and extensive code and that we've met the standard, it's the pieces of making sure that in the future you're getting what you think you are, that we want to negotiate and have in front of you as, and that you vote on in a future meeting, hopefully before December of 2025.
My concern has always been the interlocal agreement.
Yep.
We're sitting here, we were sitting there, we've never come together, but yet we've got fire, we got sheriff, everybody else needs to get together, so.
Roach.
That's where my hangup's been from the total beginning.
And, yes.
Because there is so much that's got to roll into that interlocal agreement as far as responsibility and cost, because I know you've kept telling us that Cache County's gonna make a lot of money, but I think it's gonna cost us a lot of money too for sharing those services.
Right.
And that's part of my concern from a council that we've protected our emergency services department and the citizens over there who are expecting, you know, safety and everything else, that it's done properly. So my big agree, my big concern is the interlocal agreement, that it is drafted and protected for both counties and for our citizens.
I totally agree and we have been, although we're, we don't get to be a party, as you know, to the agreements, have been working with the entities since day one, so over a year now frankly. I think that there's been great progress made on those and they, that's part of the conditions of approval is when those have to be completed by and, you know, I'm not putting the necessary details in those, but I think based on very good examples that Weber County has entered into before and Cache County, I think that you can have assurance that they're going to tackle all of the necessary and important issues. Additionally, you know, the, I would highly recommend that fiscal impact study that's been provided, you could look at those assumptions and, and say whether or not you like them or not, that's the third-party analysis of how much money the county is expected over time to garner from the project. And then we could have a discussion whether you're not, you liked those assumptions or not, but what that also shows is that the county who doesn't provide services right now, who doesn't have a road right now, isn't being charged for those services. And so going forward, even if we impact by having some monies come back from Cache to support the Weber services, there's still a, a really large fund and cushion of money that's in that report. Happy to, to look at that, but I, I think that's one of the key aspects of making sure that that works is the funding. Sorry to keep you so late.
Just a question, Chris kind of answered it, but so the, with the, the eight attachments that we were given.
Okay.
The first six of them, or five of, five of them anyway, are files? Zip files, first six of them. From these computers, we apparently can't open them.
So I haven't even seen your report. I, we can share with you the actual thousand pages of all of the documentation you per-
We need it too.
Um, I, I, no, I, I'm so proud of that, I'd love for you to see it because-
There are billions of pages there.
Um-
Only 1,100.
And all, I, I haven't seen that report, so I didn't put it together, but I do think it's really important that you be able to see the work, so.
Yeah, we tried to put them in PDF forms to make it easier to access, but apparently I have it looking.
Sorry.
We can figure out another solution. We can figure out another solution.
We're going to get a whole bunch of requests, because we all requested access several times.
Oh dear. Okay.
It just says copy file or some other error.
Yeah, it works on the computer.
Yeah, he can do it. So it's just on our iPads.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? We look forward to seeing you again soon, hopefully with the county council. Thank you.
Drive home safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, pioneering agreement.
That needs to match back up.
Start over again with the new, new commission pioneering, after tonight, cleaning all of us out of here.
We'll all be thrown out.
You don't know how hard it is to get somebody on this board here.
For once, I'll be sad.
Do we get double time at, at 10 o'clock? Is that the case?
Yeah, it goes to two, two cents an hour.
Before we, before we leave, I need to apologize to you folks for being as vociferous as I was, but looking from somebody who is new, I really feel we got used, and I don't want to hurt anybody's feelings, but we got used by the legal department to solve their problem. I really felt that way because to revoke those things that were that old is asking.
Pulling the straws as far as I'm concerned. And that's why I was so upset.
That should have been solved long ago. It's all about money. We know that.
All right, Connor.
End of question. Sorry, I apologize.
Or Matt's.
Andrew and I will tag team this together, but I guess I just, in our 10 minutes that we have, the pioneering agreement is, the purpose of that is so that if someone does construct a road, that there's some way for those guys to receive some compensation back. They're going to build a road down to their house, the property owners adjacent to them are going to get a free ride. And so that's what we're trying to prevent. And because of that, that means that if that's approved, that's going to put land use regulations on those adjacent property owners and they will be forced to pay into that road. So by approving this, that's why we're here, is because this is a land use authority and you guys, if someone builds a road down, every one of those properties that are adjacent to that are going to be forced by this action to pay in, to pay back that road.
So a question on that. So if, if that parcel is already developed.
Right, we didn't make them do a road because it was years ago. That parcel, unless they do a new development, they wouldn't have to pay into the road.
It's probably not that clear right now, to be honest with you.
That's one we need to clarify.
Yeah, I think that, that needs to be clear.
So, so what you're saying is when somebody develops a road, like in a subdivision, each of those lots that access that road, pay for that road to be developed?
Subdivision would be a totally different one, this would be just a parcel.
So now an open road out through 10 acres.
Yep.
Somebody builds a house on that, he's expected, much as a lot owner in a subdivision would, he's going to pay for part of that road.
I, I think that's probably a good analogy, so.
If you're out in Clarkston and you, and you've got a, you're building and you have to improve the road, because it's not just constructing a road, right? This is, this is improvements as well.
Yeah, I, I think that's where, I know that there's people that are rushing for this, but I, I think we want to make sure that we proceed very carefully. And again, I'm an engineer, so I'm very careful at everything I do. So if I'm trying to pull the reins back too far, then let's go forward, but I think we need to make sure that we, we've thought about that and when we read this, we think of these examples in mind and how does that apply? And it talks about you're going to have a public hearing, the public hearing needs to be 10 days before. I mean, if you look at our whole land use process, this needs to align with that too, because when someone comes in for a subdivision, you know, and, and we need to decide, there's just some timing things that we need to look at, there's some, does it go along? Do we just kind of lump this into, you know, a development or a conditional use permit or something else? How do we, how do we deal with these types of things? And then how do we, you know, how do we, how does finance take that? How do we put this deed restriction on their property so that some unbeknownst buyer doesn't know, buy a piece of land thinking they're going to develop on this road and then find out that they have, they got to pay $200,000 to play, you know, to, to play the game? So I, I think that we're, we're doing things to property owners that may or may not be aware of it. We need to make sure that we've thought through this process and that we're notifying and that we're keeping track of this and, you know, there's a lot of pressure put on the engineer to make sure those costs are right. And there's, so again, I think it's a great idea, it's a great agreement and that's why I was somewhat joking and not joking, is that we really need to take some scenarios and run some scenarios across the board and, and I guess I'm beseeching you guys to make sure that you've read it and you try to, you know, think about some of these things that you've seen over the years of development that's kind of off the normal grid a little bit and how that's going to affect the landowners and, you know.
So could just maybe discuss on this, one, I mean, one major concern I would have is that this, this is something that's activated upon development of, of property, not that I've got a piece of property that I don't ever intend to, intend to develop, but somebody builds a road or improves the road through there and I get a bill for that. I don't think that, that's, that's not-
Not only do you get a bill, but what if they need to widen it? So you have to give, you have to give up some of your land for that if they're going to widen it.
Yeah.
So my question is, is what if some of that land is in ag protection or conservation easement?
You can't do it.
So, yeah, so how, I mean, you've got a lot of considerations there. You throw a cost on a guy who's like you're saying, I want to leave it ag.
Yeah.
But then not only have I got to pay for it, but I got to give up some of my ground to make the road to, to write with.
So can I just clarify, so I, I don't disagree with anything Matt said, we don't, my comment earlier is, I don't mean to come across as saying we need to rush this through, right? I'm happy to take.
Just want to do the discussion.
Discussion started, right? I guess just to clarify a couple of things with this, yes, like Matt said, absolutely read the proposed draft ordinance. This is just a draft, you can tweak it however you want, right? It doesn't even have to be enacted. Now, the way it's currently set up is if someone, like I said, like Matt said, wants to develop a piece of property, has to go and make, make improvements like a road, and it's going to result in other properties who otherwise wouldn't be able to develop, now they can develop, so their value's increased. If they want to go develop later on, then if this agreement is approved, then they would pay their proportion of shares determined by their, but no one's forcing them to develop, no one's forcing them to pay for that.
Paying if they have no intention of developing.
If they have no intention, then they're not touched by whatever. And then if it's after the 10 years, at least that's what they get for free.
Yeah, yeah, then the benefit's there, it's not as free.
So, so it's similar to Utah powers.
Correct, and then there's like the notice requirements there and so what, before this is agreed upon, if it's agreed upon, because I guess to clarify at the beginning of this, it's a discretionary each, so this will be provided mechanism for the county council to do thumbs up or thumbs down on a pioneering agreement, on a case-by-case basis. So if a situation come up, the public hearing don't happen, council say thumbs up, thumbs down, that's basically how this is drafted on occasion. So it's not, the council's not forced to do this by any stretch. And then if one is granted into improved, notice has been given, it's not a lien on the property, but there has to be or something recorded there so that though all the benefited property owners, notice of it, if anybody comes along and applies it, they don't like it brought up, it's part of what's recorded with the county quarters office, et cetera.
How does this-
Just going to hit that highlight, again, I'm not saying this is perfect, happy to tweak it how you guys want, but just to kind of give a general conception, that's how more or less where we're at.
I mean, give Powder Mountain the example right now. Cache County doesn't want to do a road to there, but Powder Mountain does their thing and it's in Cache County. They decide to improve the road going back, because as they tell us, we're going to make a lot of money from taxes and so if they do that, now we've affected, I don't know how many landowners, keep that as forest 40 or whatever else, or range ground. And so even if they don't improve or pay on it, but it's going to widen, take away some of their property to have that road widened.
And that would, that would all have to be figured out with whoever the developer is, say, though in this case.
They'd have to acquire all the sections first.
Yeah, they'd have to acquire, well, that is not still-
Wouldn't be an automatic.
Yeah, it's not automatic with it, if that makes sense, so.
You guys looked at a rezone earlier today near the airport and I think you guys recommended denial. They would have to improve the county road all the way to that rezone? That would be one of these opportunities where he would say, I, I want to try to get a pioneering agreement, I'm going to improve this wide road all the way down to my property. And then that's going to, you know, he's going to want to come in and say, hey, look, I don't want to improve county roads on, on my dime, so.
Or at least provide a mechanism that if those previous deed parcels, yeah, I can build on it now because the guy down the road did, and he's up paying his share. If, again, the council, as the current draft is, goes through the process, council proves it, you know.
And it could be a deal, right? If, if inflation goes up, they might be like, sure, I, I got, I'm getting that for 50%, but if, say, oil and asphalt went down, they might be like, hey, I'm paying more than what I could get it for today, so.
I don't think it'll happen.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
So.
In a, in a subdivision, when somebody builds a road, they are responsible to build that road to grade and do everything that needs to be done. And then it is turned over to the city or the county to be maintained and taken care of. When does that point come with the person who develops a road out through, that it's private or public?
I think it depends on a case-by-case basis, like I said, like Matt was saying earlier, some people in the process are going to look at that project, you know, this will be something, depends on what the situation comes.
So that person will be well aware of what they're doing.
Some type of existing, an existing public road, it's there, but it's a, it's a lower standard and they need to widen and pave and, and all of those things, so it's, it's actually improving the public road, so.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question for Matt. So in my mind, I, I've still got a little confusion on this. Because I understand when we're talking, I, I totally understand the industrial use today, but it was my understanding, unless it's changed, that if I choose to build my house out in the county and it's down some gravel lane, I'm responsible for either paving the entire frontage of my property or paying into a fund that you guys have 10 or 12 years to use if you don't pave it that time, you give it back to me. So how does that tie in? If I'm only paving my frontage, how does that tie into this?
If you're just paving your frontage, I probably wouldn't recommend this and I would hope that the council would say it doesn't apply in your situation.
So are we changing that or is it already changed?
No, that will, that will not need to be changed. You're, you're very close, but what you're talking about, the fee in lieu of and stuff is, is a little bit different. That's more for leapfrogging improvements. This is really going to be when someone is pioneering a road that's, you know, let's say someone north of Clarkston wants to build a house, right? They're going to have to pave the road from Clarkston city limits to wherever that house is that they're going to go, right? That, that fee in lieu of stuff that you're talking about would not, would not apply. They would have to pave it all the way from Clarkston all the way to their house.
So there was a kid that, it hasn't been too long ago, that was wanting to build a house, but he was going to try and split the parcel to justify his expenses and sell a second one.
Are you talking about in Clarkston?
Yeah, I just swore, he was north of Clarkston, and I just swore, we never told him, he had to pave from Clarkston to his house. He only had to pave in front of his house or in lieu of.
But that's because he starts at the end of pavement, so he's the first parcel.
Yeah, I thought he was on gravel.
No, well, he is, but his parcel is, ends, the, the pavement ends and gravel starts.
Okay, you, you guys are all shaking your head, so I remember that.
So this is possible, that he could say, hey, I'm pulling this road out, this whole another 400 feet and I'm paving it and improving it for my development, but the people on the other side of the street, I want to enact a pioneering agreement and they should be responsible for half of these costs if they come in to develop and tenure.
I support that, but I'm glad you clarified it because I was, I was thinking that we were still allowing them to leapfrog and they only had the, they most likely would pay the fee in lieu if it wasn't paved to them.
He tried, he tried to leapfrog about 50 feet and I told him no. He was wanting to leave a tiny section of like 50 foot of gravel. Like, no, that's not how this works. He said, that's off my property, sorry, that's how the code works. So I, I don't think that there's a lot in here, but I want to make sure that the planning commission is comfortable with it, they kind of understand what we're doing and make sure that, that we're all on the same page. Andrew spent a lot of time, this has came from other cities that are enacting it, but they also might have different county codes. So we're not looking at changing county code necessarily somewhere else, we're just trying to put this in the code so that this would be an option for people. The, the county council asked for this five years ago.
So the, the, the Smithfield industrial rezone earlier tonight as an example, that, that's how that would have played out potentially? Like he, he would have had to improve that road all the way out there.
Correct.
And if this was in place, he could potentially have used this if we had approved it.
Yeah.
Because all of those properties along the way are benefiting from it.
Yeah, we might have said, okay, if you're residential, you're exempt from this, but any other industrial use that comes through here, let's, let's enact this pioneering agreement solely for industrial uses or for commercial uses. Because if you were trying to build a house on that road, you wouldn't, you'd be fine. You wouldn't have to do any improvements.
Yeah, I think it's a-
So, so we, we want, we think this is fair. We think it's just of the council, just of everyone else to do it, so.
It's an improvement, for sure.
There was another development that was going out in paradise, this was four or five years ago, and I remember the guy was at the end of the lane and we were telling him that he had to pave it, which didn't coordinate with what I was thinking on that, just the frontage. But I remember the neighbors here supporting it because the minute he got that, they, they wanted to do their deal.
Yes.
Quick, Andrew, as I, I know it's late and I can't read very well, getting blurry, but so I, I build my house, the pioneering agreement, it looks like on D here that I would have to, if somebody comes in and builds across the street, I have to file an appeal to get that money instead of it automatically coming back? Am I reading that wrong?
You're looking at Delta, right?
Yes.
I, I guess what that's referred to, the bill things, there's like, say, a benefited parcel, say neighbors building a house and you're getting notice like, hey, if I want to develop my property.
Well, because-
You, you get your chance to come to the hearing, right?
Yeah, well, the scenario is-
You can appeal the decision of the council or the decision to grant this pioneering agreement or in that sense.
But you know, if, if that neighbor has that parcel that's conforming and they don't have to come, you know, and they just get a building permit for it.
Correct.
Then I might not be paying attention and see it until all of a sudden they're building and pouring concrete and at that, and they've already got a building permit and I put the road in. Is there a method, you know, if I don't get noticed, then I'm going to be coming in afterwards saying, hey, I paid for this road so you could, so you could build. So how is that?
Seems like that deed recording that's going to be on all those parcels would, before the building permit was approved, they would get noticed in the building department.
So there is a-
This parcel already has a restriction.
That should work as, everyone, everyone who could be a benefited parcel should get notified of the hearing and get, and if it's approved and it's approved out to them, that will get recorded on that parcel, so they should be aware of it.
So the benefited parcel could be, because I was saying, I wouldn't be a benefited parcel because I would have already put it in.
Correct, so then you wouldn't.
But I would get, I would have paid for the road.
Yeah, if you did that before this, enact a venue, that's on you, right?
Right, right, no, no, I, I'm just trying to think through it in my mind how it's going to work.
That's something our clerk can keep watch on no matter what then, right?
As far as-
As far as what he's talking about, that he's not on it to make sure anybody who builds after-
Comes afterwards.
Comes afterwards, that he hasn't got to be the one doing-
I think with as much of your pain, you'll be watching what happens down that road.
Yeah, but say he's on a mission.
Yeah, I think, I think the, the recording, we got to make sure that part's good. The recording on the, all those other parcels on that road, that it would automatically trigger a restriction or review when, when the planning department does the review for a building permit or whatever it is.
If you want to hash out that detail, then my office will shut it down.
Yeah, it gets flagged that this parcel has that on it.
I'm just wondering if our, that department can keep up on that, is what I'm wondering.
Yeah, and, and I think there should be, some of these should probably start here, right? I think as part of a development, they should come in knowing that, hey, they've requested this be part of a pioneering agreement, so that's understood here, even though a lot of the power and the authority is given to the council, so. I know it's 10, I was past my 10 minutes, but.
Be pretty bad.
How's our agenda next?
Can I, can I sit?
We would let you do it.
And thanks, council member, for being here with us tonight. Next agenda? I am so happy to report, one rezone, one subdivision.
And 13 continuations.
Sure, yeah.
Hey, we got, we don't hit that yet, we got two things to add. Hey, we got, we don't hit that yet, we got two things to add, two, two first reviews of some code amendments. So one, I met with Angie earlier today, there's, there's a little line in our code that came up that if you do, if you do anything within 16 and a half feet of a canal, you can't build a fence in the county within 16 and a half feet of canal.
Is that on both sides?
It is, and, and that, so we need to address that, right? That, that shouldn't be county code, that should be canal company code, right? If there's a development happening, you should get a letter from the canal company if you wanna be in their easement. We shouldn't dictate that, so that's, I think, a pretty simple one. And the other one is to get the densities between industrial and commercial to match at 80% instead of 50 and 80. So I, coverage, yeah, not densities, coverage. I think council member Buse will be making the same request, but if we can get those, if we already got a light agenda, those two should both be pretty easy to knock out.
What about residential pools in the county? Do they have to be fenced, or can they be open?
Uh, I think it's a building requirement that they be fenced.
They are, so if they're not, you just call in and.
After you go swimming, though.
Complaint base.
After your dog.
After your cow drowned in it.